Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. This is the School Board Workshop and the time is 1:00 P. M. Sergeant at Arms, has the front lobby been attended to?
Yes.
Thank you. There are 12 items on the agenda today. Safety updates, school names, construction change order reports, September 2025, construction projects, bi-monthly update, November 2025, budget overview, job descriptions, policy review, pre-briefing first reading, plan for student enrollment of 2026 and '27 year, briefing first reading, district strategies, priorities, recruitment and retention, student advisory focus group, fraud, waste and abuse, public comment and good of the order or other business. Per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two for follow-up, with a total of 10 minutes during today's discussions. We will begin this afternoon with our safety update presented by Dave Newland and Sherri Leonard.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Denise Carlin, Superintendent and our School Board Attorney, Kathy Dupree Bruno.
With me, as you mentioned, with me is Sherri Leonard. She's our District Threat Management Coordinator. Just to give you a little heads up on the requirement for that, so this is required for every district to have a DTMC, District Threat Management Coordinator, and actually now, we actually have a backup as well. It's also required in the latest legislation. So we thought today we'd talk a little bit about Threat Management Program, how this was started, and kind of show where we're at currently right now. Since the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, when that occurred, this is what created the requirement to have threat assessment in every district in Florida. And so this program started back in 2018, and that's where we started, obviously, here at Lee County, with different programs, as we've now we brought to present now, and we'll talk about how we've kind of upgraded our program from what it was to what it is today.
A microphone challenge. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the time and your support for the district's Threat Management Program. Just real quick, we started in 2018 with a program from a company called Sigma. We then worked to another program, and we were staying ahead of what the state was mandating in our program by at least a year. We were in advance of those initiatives that they legislated. So that was a positive for our district. We then transferred to a digital platform in August of 2021 through a grant that we had acquired. January 1st of 2024 was the official implementation of the state's model. It's called the Florida Harm Prevention and Threat Management Model, and they actually created it. They had workshops and workflow groups throughout the state, and they created our own model. And then they implemented, just this school year, a new digital platform. It's called the Safety and Threat Management Portal. We are still working out the bugs, as it is new, but it will be a program that will enable us to transfer student records throughout all 67 counties in the state of Florida. This is just a slide to kind of show you how the legislation came about over the years. It began in 2018, where it required a team at every school. Then it transitioned into having an instrument, which is what they technically call the paperwork that we use for the program in assessing the students. 2021 were minor changes and tweaks to the program. In 2022, we went through and added legislation about the actual process and the decision-making part of the program. And then from '23 to '25, they worked on implementing the Florida Model Program and the associated software with that.
And just so I can jump in real quick, so right now, we're going through the transition, going from navigate 360 to the Florida Model. All of our data is being transferred to that new Florida Model, so eventually, all everything will be through that one database, like Sherri mentioned, and we'll have access to all the Florida counties as well.
So we have, basically, what the legislation does is it requires that each team at the school have certain members on it. A minimum of, you have to have an administrator, a law enforcement officer, which, as you know, we have SROs, someone with experience in instruction, as well as a mental health professional. Those are the minimum people that have to be on each team at each school. Through the Florida Administrative Rule, which is FAC Rule 6A-1-0019, that clarifies what the roles of the people were on the team and all the documentation required. And then also, legislation gives us not only the initial training requirements, but also we have to do annual training as well. So again, that Rule 6A-1.0019 defines the process. The overall statute that governs the program is 106.07. Through the State Board of Education, all the documents, manuals, forms were approved, and those are what give us the specific details on how an assessment is to take place, the guidelines on how to determine the level of concern, how to create a student support management plan, and how to implement and oversee those plans. That provides consistency and accountability for each of our students, and thereby ensures safety for everyone involved. So the Threat Management Theory basically is to guide student safety efforts. That's the whole purpose of this plan. The Student Support Management Plan functions not unlike a safety plan would. We put, we use the resources available throughout our district, our mental health resources, our accountability and discipline resources, our interventions, along with goals when are applicable. It also provides that we notify parents every step of the way throughout the process, and there are considerations for students with disabilities, for things such as baseline behaviors and other federal protections afforded those students. However, we do treat them the same as every other student if they make a threat. The also, the purpose is early intervention. We want to catch these behaviors as soon as we notice them, so that they don't become egregious and more threatening over time. This is just some information for you from experts about why threat management is so important to the safety of our students. Basically, it reiterates the early intervention and how that supports students before their behaviors escalate to the threatening level. We ensure fairness when we use this assessment by using that multidisciplinary team, so that everyone gets the same evaluation. The purpose of having different members on the team is also to have those different perspectives, because a mental health professional might see something through a different lens than, say, an administrator who's used to conducting disciplinary approach for the different things they evaluate. That's why we have the multi-tiered system, and again, it helps us with early identification of these behaviors and/or threats that students might make or encounter.
So if you look at the data that we're, you're seeing in front of you right now, in '23 to '24, total cases were 736 cases. Monthly average was 74. You see the spike in '24 to '25. We had roughly 1,928 cases. The average monthly was 214. If you look at the graph underneath, you'll see a big spike in September. So it's kind of interesting to figure out, like, I'm sure the question is, why are we having that spike, and why do we have so many more cases versus the prior year? One of the things we talked about, and unfortunately, we don't have the exact answer, but we can tell you is that in House Bill 1473, one of the things we did notice was, within the first five days, we sent out Fortify Florida Training to all the schools, community, and everybody else. So it's interesting that spike occurred that same timeframe in September. We don't know if it brings awareness, and that's what maybe creates more reporting, possibly. It's kind of hard to say. But as you can see, after that point, it drops back down to, pretty much stay the rest of the year. Now, I can tell you, this year, for example, we did exactly the same thing, but there was no spike in September. So it's kind of interesting to figure out why that is. And then looking at, really, if you look at the table below, you'll see that the monthly averages, as I mentioned before, I talked about '23 and '24, and '24 and '25. Now, this only goes, for this year, only up to October 20th, but our monthly average is 109, which is half of last year. The interesting part of that is, if I go back to the prior slide, when you talk to the state, and now we may have meetings with the state about all the other districts as far as threat assessments, and we can tell you that in comparison to the other top 10 school districts, we are about 50% less than the other districts' size. That's in comparison. Again, I can't explain why that is, but there is a difference. That was recognized in one of the meetings that Sherri had. So we're just, you know, as we track the data, it's kind of interesting to follow to see how these things, again, like I mentioned before, why September spiked, then it went down, but then this year it didn't happen. So we just continue to do that, track these things, look for trends as we go forward, you know, come up with better answers, but as long as we're keeping track of all the threat assessments, we're getting ahead of it, like we're supposed to be doing, that's the main point. So, and we'll stand by for any questions.
Board members, any questions? Superintendent?
Yes, so first of all, thank you, Mr. Newland and Ms. Leonard, for your outstanding presentation, and as always, we appreciate all the work of our schools and your team on threat assessments and everything that we do inside of safety in our school district. I wanted to share just briefly with the board, just to set some context, about how important threat management is. So I had the occasion to meet with Max Schacter, who is the father of Alex Schacter, who, whose life was taken at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and had the opportunity to meet with him offline, and we had a very thorough conversation about Marjory Stoneman Douglas, what happened there, where were the failures. I know several of you, including Ms. Jordan, have had the opportunity to walk that building. But we had the conversation, and there's so many things that we do inside of school safety, and you know that's always our top priority as a government's team, is making sure our children, our staff, and our schools are safe. But I did ask him, I said, of all the strategies that we employ, from hardening schools to everything we do, counseling, everything we do, if you had to pick one strategy, one really high-yield strategy out of all the good things we can do, what should we reinforce out there? And he, without a pause, said, "Threat assessment." If that had been done, and had been clearly communicated in that situation, it is his belief that that tragedy could have been averted. So I just, again, so deeply appreciate the work of our team, our principals, and all of our folks at the school level that take this seriously. It is a tremendous time commitment. I will tell you, having run schools for 18 years, there is a lot of work to be done at the school level. We push on student achievement. We want all of those things to happen in alignment with our priorities. But I am so proud of our schools, because they prioritize the amount of hours it takes to meet with our children, meet with our families, meet with staff, and truly understand the level of the threat, so that it can be neutralized and avoided. So I'm just really proud of our team, and thank you for the opportunity to share some comments.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Board members, any questions or comments? Ms. Jordan?
I was just curious. Thank you very much again. As Dr. Carlin said, this is really good to see this. But what I have noticed lately, and I don't know if it fits, ties in with this, because I do believe that it does, the amount of Baker X, which I've seen, it seems like lately they've been rising, and I don't know if that fits into this, or it's tying into a part of this, but I just, I'm not sure what's happening there.
Sherri has a chance to be able to help with that, respond to that, I have my own.
Mental health plays a role in threat assessment. It is commonly an issue with some of our students, a factor in their situations. It could be related to traumas. It could be related to outside traumas at home. It could be something simple that happened in the school, and it's a problem. Essentially, every threat assessment is a problem that a student has that they don't know how to solve. They don't have the skills or the emotional fortitude on how to solve it, so they act out in the ways that they feel solve the problem for them.
Ms. Jordan, we'd be happy to provide that data. I have the same question. I don't have a sense this year that it is necessarily up, but I do want to make sure we get that data to the board, and we'll make sure that happens through Ms. Brooks and team. So thank you for the question.
If I may.
Yes, please.
I just noticed, because like, you know, there was a period of time where we did not see not one, and then all of a sudden, it's like, it seems pretty prominent right now, and so that's why I wasn't sure if this was the appropriate, but in everything that you're speaking about, it kind of ties into that. So thank you, Dr. Carlin.
Yes, we'll be happy to provide that data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
On the Threat Assessment Team, we have a mental health professional there. Is that a psychologist, school counselor, a social worker, or can it be any of the above?
It could be any of the above, as long as they're fully licensed or certified. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to school names. Presenting to us this afternoon is Chuck Velardi, Sharice Trent, Dr. Jason Kurtz, Jackie Fantasia, and Rob Spicker.
My name is Jason Kurtz, the principal at Hector Caffarada Elementary School, and also good afternoon to Kathy Dupree Bruno and Superintendent Denise Carlin. My compadres here, introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. I'm Jackie Fantasia, proud principal at James Stephens Elementary. Thank you for having me.
We are back before you today to discuss the change in names for our school buildings, and I'm going to start with Hector Caffarada. Just to kind of review where we have been, this comes before you under School Board Policy 7250, the commemoration of school facilities. We have a new K-8 building that is being constructed currently in the Northwest Cape. I'm excited to tell you, there's some drywall going up in the elementary school building, some painting going on the wall, so just a little side note there. We had our first ad hoc meeting on September 5th, and then we sent out a survey of our constituents on the 10th, a second ad hoc meeting towards the end of September, and then a presentation to our SAC as well. We were here before you on the 7th for the initial workshop, and then now here we are on November 4th. These were the members of our committee. We had a mixture of parents, paraprofessionals, teachers, food service people, and some admin. And then our, through our survey results, about 60%, 61% of our survey respondents actually were parents, and then we had about a quarter that were students, and 16% that were staff. Our top two names were Hector A. Caffarada Jr., K-8 School, and the Hector Caffarada, Hector A. Caffarada Jr. School, and our recommendation for you all is Hector A. Caffarada Jr., K-8 School.
Superintendent, do you have any comments?
Just thank you to Dr. Kurtz and the team, and to everybody at Hector Caffarada. We really appreciate it, and thank you so much for your patience post-Ian. We want to get it right, and we're very excited to see that K-8 coming to fruition, so thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a reminder, my fellow board members, I'll be pulling item I-1 in support of this tonight, in order to suspend the rules on 7250 board policy, as currently K-8 is not supporting in that naming nomenclature at the moment. We're working, I know, on that change in that policy, but it will not be complete in time, so I just want to assure everyone, or, you know, inform everyone that that'll be pulled tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any other comments? Continue.
Okay, so we'll review James Stephens Elementary name change. Again, kind of where we were, following the same school board policy, 7250. We're experiencing a change in our school site. We've expanded to pre-K through 6th grade, effective this school year. It's going very well. We'd like to expand to 7th grade, effective next school year, and then finally end the expansion in school year 27, '28 with 8th grade. In August, we held our first ad hoc committee meeting. September 8th through the 15th, we surveyed all of our stakeholders. On the 18th, at SAC, we presented our name change. On October 7th, we met with you all, and we're back here today. So here's a list of our ad hoc committee. Again, a nice mix of administrators, TELC, SPALC, different representation on our group, and some of us carry multiple roles, a parent and also an administrator, and some of the staff are also parents. So our survey results were about 51% for James Stephens Community School. We also took 43% for James Stephens School, and then there were some people who still wanted to go back to James Stephens Academy, which is what we were prior. So we're moving forward today with the name recommendation as James Stephens Community School. Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Jordan?
I just wanted to have a comment regarding the name. The community in itself loves this name, so when you're out there and you're speaking to people, they said, where did that, who thought of the community? Because that's exactly who we are, so thank you.
Yeah, there's been a lot of research with community hub schools, so I'm really glad that the community supports this change.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Carlin, Board Attorney, part three of our presentation. I'm Rob Spicker. I'm the Director of Communications, Marketing, and Public Relations. With me today are Lemuel Teal, Assistant Principal, Meowgro Sowers, and North Fort Myers High School Assistant Principal, Samantha Hutchinson. Our job is to present you the survey results for the naming of two new schools, High School NNN, and then, that's in Alva, and Elementary L in Lehigh Acres. So real quickly, just as a, to start off our conversation, Elementary L is going to be opening up in a swing campus between Lehigh Senior High School and Varsity Lakes Middle School next August. It'll have a capacity for 400 students while there. The campus itself is built on State Road 82, near Sunshine Boulevard. It's ready for 1,000 students in August of 2028. High School NNN, as you know, just getting started with construction at 2,1,700 Tuckahoe Road in Alva. It will accommodate 2,000 students when it opens up in August of 2027. So we're guided by the same school board policy, 7250. Just to walk you through our process while naming schools, we formed ad hoc committees with community members, parents, and some school or district staff for both of these schools' naming process. We solicited naming suggestions from our community that was advertised through a school messenger emails to our parents, social media, news media, and our website for two weeks in October. About 380 suggestions were sent in for the elementary school, and more than 1,100 for the high school. Our ad hoc committees met on October 29th to review the suggestions, vet them against school board policy, and then recommend up to six finalists. Ms. Sowers is the Elementary L Ad Hoc Committee Chair, so I'm going to turn the presentation over to her to go over those results.
I'm hoping this is working. It is wonderful. Good afternoon, board, and Dr. Carlin. So we, you can see on the presentation, we had several names that were suggested that we discussed. Many of the names dealt with nature, a lot of them around oaks and meadows and Malaluka trees, that was a big one. Another one was Charlie Kirk Elementary, that had about six or seven votes. The following had Lehigh Elementary. A lot of recommendations were around and variations on the word "Lehigh." I'm not sure if they realize there's already another school, which is, of course, part of the naming policy, but there were a lot. A lot around Gunnery Elementary, a lot on Bright, Bright Stars, Bright Angels, anything dealing with bright. And the last one centered around the name of Lee Ratner or Lucky Lee Elementary. These are our recommended finalists for you to review on this first part of our ad hoc committee recommendations to you. Bright Elementary, Green Meadow Elementary, and Lucky Lee Elementary received the most votes of all.
High School NNN naming committee convened to review community submitted name suggestions for the new high school and ensure each option aligned with district policy. Some names were not accepted because they were duplicated or closely resembled existing school names, lacked a clear tie to the area, or did not meet district naming guidelines. The name suggestions with the most submission was Alva High School, along with several, several variations of such. Other submissions with high requests included Charlie Kirk, Donald Trump, and Mike Greenwell, which were not considered because they do not meet board policy 7250 E.7.1, criteria for school names as it relates to people. The community also rejected Tuckahoe and Kaluushahachi as they lack representation of the entire student body. The committee aimed to select names that would reflect the incredible community response, foster community pride, reflect the school's identity, and honor to the heritage of the region in a positive and lasting way. After a thoughtful discussion, the community input, the committee recommended the following finalist names for consideration. Alva School, the Alva School, Alva Heritage High School, Peter Nelson High School, and Franklin Mann High School. These names were advanced because they reflect strong connections to the Alva community and its rich history, or honor individuals who made meaningful contributions to the area. The variations further deepen the connection to the heritage of the area. Danish Captain Peter Nelson founded Alva and named it after a little white flower in Denmark. Franklin Mann for his public service. Each finalist embodies qualities of pride, tradition, and excellence, values that represent the vision for the new high school and its role within our district.
So with the next steps, with consensus from you today with the suggested finalists for both the elementary school and the high school, we open up a two-week voting period tomorrow. We ask our community again to rank their choices in order of their preference. Our ad hoc committees reconvene just before Thanksgiving to go over those results, and we're back before you at the December 1st workshop with a recommendation from those committees and a vote for you that evening on December 1st. So I appreciate the work that our ad hoc chairs have put in so far. Thank you very much. And at this point, to Dr. Carlin and the board, if there's any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spicker, and ladies, really appreciate the work that you've put into this, and we look forward to the board's feedback. Thank you.
Board members, any comments? Mr. Persons?
Being like, especially the two new schools, will the same committee take names for mascots, or how's that done in the past? How do they pick it?
The principals usually lead that effort, and so once the principal is appointed for each of those schools, they can work through the community or reach out to ad hoc committee members, whomever they'd like, to start to develop a process for the mascot and the school colors.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. One thing, again, obviously have to go school by school under 7250 as a policy. If it ends up being kind of geographic, I just hope we somewhat keep in mind, obviously, like an NNN, there's a future, I don't remember the name, middle school that'll go there if we go that route. I just hope we kind of keep that under consideration, as some of these schools will have multiple sites. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon. Next, we have the construction change order reports from September 2025 along with our construction projects by monthly update from November 2025. And this afternoon, we will be hearing from Scott Rickenbacher and Kiara Sostak.
Superintendent Carlin, Esquire DePoe Bruno, this is your monthly change order report for September as required by statute. On the front cover sheet, you can see we had direct material purchases of 1.2 million, which resulted in a tax return to the district of $68,599. Non-direct material purchase orders, standard change orders, 412,000, zero return, contingency adjustments of 289,000 and zero return on credits for that. You will see the backup sheet supporting all of the change orders and the DMP reconciliations. Are there any questions on any of these?
Board members, any questions? Okay, I see none. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, first slide. This is your two-month update on all of the projects. I will be adding a little bit of conversation at the end of each slide telling you what has it changed in the last 60 days since we last presented to you or from when this was generated and went into the board doc system. So, currently right now on Bay Shore, the only exception to the K-8, I don't know if you've been out there, but we're out there pouring our precast panel beds, getting ready to pour them up, cure them and start standing them. Vibratory compaction was completed in the beginning of October. There was a groundbreaking out there, I believe several of you attended on the 3rd of December and we hopefully will start standing panels here shortly in the next couple of weeks. Any questions on Bay Shore? Okay? Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. Persons.
I noticed they're sort of working really hard on part of a parking lot since they lost their other one.
Correct.
Will that be able to be opened before the school is done? I mean, it's not really adjacent to it if it's finished or is there any plans to have it open earlier?
Let me get with the Assistant Director who sits in on the project field meetings and I'll get an answer to you and relay that back to the board members for you.
I know that would be a big help for everybody.
We do try to accommodate the school and the staff if we can to make those adjustments, but let me talk with the team first before I commit.
Thank you.
Next up, BBB pre-K-8. Currently, we have officially submitted all of our Southwest, South Florida Water Management permitting, bugs, bunnies, water flow and sewer. So, that's in the process to be approved. And again, that school doesn't open until April of '28, so we're ahead of schedule. This is the last piece of the puzzle for permitting, which ultimately when the timing is right, we'll put out for public bids and then come forward to you guys with a total project cost. Are there any questions on BBB? Bonita Springs Elementary rebuild. I don't know if you've been down there, but it's gone pretty quickly. It's probably one of the most congested sites other than when I did Dumber High School or worked in Manhattan. Foundations are complete. Building 20, which is the main building of the CMU is underway. We just poured all of the tie beams. That locks in all the CMU before our steel goes in and we started structural steel this week. So, that's going really quickly and hopefully we're on schedule and hopefully we can deliver that a little early if possible. Any questions on Bonita?
I don't have, I don't have a question. I just have a compliment. We were, Superintendent and I visited the school on Friday when we pulled up. It was really impressive and it was good to see the morale of the people, the teachers there and of course, Mr. Hernandez, the principal, they're all excited about the second floor going on the school already. So, you're right about the steel. They are moving quickly and parking is a challenge. I know I had to park on the ground, so.
Very much.
Good job.
Thank you. And that's the team. I just signed the paper. So, the team gets all the credit on that. Next is Cape Technical College expansion. Again, another job that's going flying out of the box there. I don't know if you've been there. All the tilt panels are poured and stood in place and we're starting steel, structural steel this week, which will enable us to obviously get the decking on, close it in, get it weather tight and start some of the interior finishes. So, that's on schedule and on cue. Any questions? Okay. We're banging this one out quick, don't we? Cypress Lake Middle School, another highly congested project, lot going on in a small, small area. To add to this, we currently have, all the tilt is complete and erected. Structural steel is being installed as we speak. The main building three, which is the three-story, is actually dried in. So, that's got its decking in and first layer of roofing and that allows us to get going with interior finishes, ductwork, sheet rock installation. Underground utilities are currently underway, all of the duct banks and the FPNL process and conduit going in. Total completion and occupancy of that building is in October of '26. We forecasted it out till February of '27, but that's for the demobilization of all the portable to get that area of the site cleaned up and moving out. Next slide. Any questions? Hector Cafarada Jr., K-8, that school is gone great guns. If you haven't been out there, and I should have mentioned as we, on a construction website, when you click on our products, you'll see a long list of the products. Keep scrolling to the bottom and you'll see a photo gallery. Every month, we update that with all the aerials and interior pictures of each project pretty detailed. So, if you have time, take a look at that. You can see what schools are at what stage and what's going on. But for Hector Cafarada, all the tilt panel is completed on all the buildings. Structural steel is being installed in the last three buildings. Windows are being installed throughout all the buildings at the precast. It is installed in, roof is going on. Three out of the six buildings have roofs on it, first layer. And as the principal Jason inferred, we are already painting sheet rock in the inside of building 20. So, the finish is done and we're putting finish and paint and finishes in that building. So, it's, it's going. The LCEC just provided us with a transformer, so we'll be energizing that building, getting permanent power on and off the generator and the temporary. And we just found out that I think we have a meeting this Thursday, Mr. Fisher, in regards to the off-site permit work as we work through a MOU and an ILA. So, hopefully I'll be sitting in a meeting sometime Thursday to iron that through. Okay. Next slide. Elementary L, you just talked about the name. That is a dual site. L is right there with OO. Unfortunately, this particular school, everything is shut down right now because of the current government status. So, Army Corps is not reviewing permits. Fish and Wildlife is not reviewing permits. We're hoping that kicks back in, so our time clock on that school continues and moves forward. The drop dead for me to be shoveling the ground to keep the original schedule for the capital plan is September of 2026. So, I've got to have all my permits in place in order to keep that. So, we still have some time to push it through. The mitigation banks that we use are officially closed in an auditing process. Now, we got through the mitigation bank on NNN High School for the Panther crossings and so forth, but this one, we found other agencies might be a little bit more expensive. We have to go to separate entities and grab those credits from the smaller entities to, to make the volume we need for this particular site. We won't know that until the Army Corps completes their process and their permitting and hopefully by that time, the mitigation banks have completed their audit and are reopened again. We just get a little better bang for the buck when we buy the mitigation credits to that bank, that particular bank. Any questions on L and OO? Middle School OO, we just spoke about, same thing as L. Elementary M, right now, we have 100% drawings and again, another project that we're waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers. Legislative gals, Kristine and her team have been working with us. Not much we can do to push the people that they help focus the attention on these reviews until the government's open back up again, hopefully soon. Any questions on that? High School NNN, again, right now, we're waiting for one, literally an email for Fish Wildlife Service, FWS. Basically sends one email to South Florida Water Management that closes off the wildlife permitting and we should be getting a water permit once that happens within 30 days. So, again, that time is clicking. We're waiting for the government to open back up. We have Kristine, her people focusing, trying to put the push on that and we can get literally all of the RAIs, which is Requests for Additional Information on all of the animals and so forth, have already been ironed through. We've already got a purchase order to a tortoise hotel, an Arcadia, so that's ready to go when the timing's right. 15 grand, I believe, or enough for three turtles. It's not cheap. And as soon as the government opens up and we can get that email and get South Florida Water Management to issue and get this thing started. Any questions on NNN? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jordan? If I may, so on this documentation though, it does state that we have received permitting, permitting received, which it has not. So, can we just correct that? Because I, you just said we have not received it, correct?
We have.
Army Corps and Southwest Florida Water Management District permitting received, but I don't believe that we have received that.
Well, okay, yes, I will change that language. We have received Army Corps, no permit required. Southwest Florida Water Management, we have answered and responded to all requests for additional information, to RAIs. So, it's ready to go, but they cannot finalize their permit until that one piece of email from Fish and Wildlife Service is issued to them. And then it's our expectation that we should get a permit far in advance of the 30-day max they have because all of the comments and all of the design has been already answered to their satisfaction.
Right, and I understand that, but I.
But it's a play on words. I'll get it corrected.
Yeah, I've just had a lot of people question like, "We're not being transparent because have they really received it?" And it's stating that, so I just want to make sure that we are being transparent, that we're still waiting for that to.
I will get that corrected, so it's, it's more accurate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chivinelli, did you have something?
Yes, so we're waiting on, you said Fish and Wildlife?
FWI.
Is that state or federal?
Federal.
Okay, I was.
See, normally how it works is when you're involved with Army Corps, they are a checkbox underneath Army Corps. So, the Army Corps is constantly pushing them to do their reviews, to provide their releases. Since Army Corps, no permit required, they walked away from it. They're out on their own. So, there's no entity pushing. So, we have the legislative girls, Kristine and her staff that are helping that with some of the political means, trying to get them through that hurdle. Unfortunately, we didn't expect the government in its entirety to shut down, so I'm kind of sitting there holding pattern.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
One more question, Ms. Jordan.
I'm so sorry. So, I know you gave us like a dead, September 26th was like your need to have the other information for the one school. What is your end date on this project where it will remain the same amount of money?
We have already started the shop drawing process. We have, we will start the buyout process. I'm thinking by the first of the year, I have to be able to make a movement on this site before I realize some financial penalties. Now, whether that be rebidding or some escalation in costs because we missed the 45-day window for buying materials, that has not come forward. As soon as my group feels in our meetings that that is something I should alert you to, you'll be the first to know through my boss, Mr. Neese.
Thank you.
But we believe all the stars will come together by the first of the year and hopefully we can get this thing moving. So, we're doing other things to accommodate this initial time.
Ms. Persons?
One other email mentioned, I'll let you explain it, that, you know, we took out a cop loan to cover this.
Correct.
But it says here, capital millage. I don't think they quite understand that you have to have capital payoff to.
Well, I'm not going to speak to capital millage. This job will be funded with a certificate of participation, which I believe is just being resolved today. At least that's my understanding from the budget finance folks. Once that is done, we just received the money from budget and finance, so we're able to cut purchase orders to the three vendors that you approved back on October 7th. The millage part is in a different division. That's not part of my knowledge base, so I wish I could answer that for you.
Ms. Persons, we'll be happy to get that information.
Yeah, it's just the way it says, funding source, capital millage, just confusing to people. That was all.
And last but not least, Riverdale High School. We are complete with punchlers and we're currently in project closeout phase. Any questions on that school?
No.
That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, VPAA, I'm sorry, one last one. VPAA, the whole, since 2021, we've been out there on an entire campus. We're finally done. You'll be having a ribbon cutting ceremony out there in the next week or two, I believe. School came out great, getting a lot of compliments. All of the finishes are done. It's been a long run, so thank you. Hope you enjoy the ribbon cutting.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan and Ms. Chivinelli?
I have a question and I don't know, through the chair to Dr. Carlin, I'm not sure if it's for, it's regarding 14, the approval to increase expenditures for site preparations and improvements. I know it's not part of this particular topic that we're on, but I can either get an answer here or we can pull it and speak on it later, whichever is preferred.
Just a point of clarification, yeah. No worries. Which slide are you on it? My apologies.
It's a, it's, actually it's on the action meeting for tonight.
Okay.
14. And it is for the increase of expenditures for SDLC and it's for site preparations and improvements. And it's for 365,000, I believe it is. And I was just curious on what site is that for? Is that multiple sites? Where is it at when we're looking at, because it's just one lump sum. It's like an addition. And I just realized that today when I was re-going over everything, so I do apologize that I didn't bring it forward.
Sure, no problem, yeah. We will take a look at that during the course of the meeting and I just need to track down the item that you're speaking about. We'd be happy to have staff look into that and get you some information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chivinelli?
So, I have a question. I want to make sure that we don't buy steel before we, you know, like what happened with the Three Oaks property. So, I want to avoid that from, so I wanted to bring that up, just to make sure we don't prematurely buy steel.
Correct. Right now, we're doing shop drawings, so hopefully the first three months of the job and actually, we haven't even issued the notice to proceed to those three vendors because we didn't have the money and the purchase order opened until just recently, last week. So, we're already a month into that three-month waiting period. So, we'll start with shop drawings. We'll start ordering some of the RCP, which are long lead. We'll start ordering some of the generators and the switch gears. If it is the superintendents and the board will that I come to you before I do any large direct material purchase purchasing of this material, I can certainly do that. If that's Dr. Collins' wish.
Yes, let me comment on that if I may. Certainly, we want to be, keeping you apprised if there are delays or, you know, any, any developments in the situation. I think that's very appropriate. So, yes, we will, we will keep you apprised. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Ms. G, I don't have any more room in the parking lot to store stuff, trust me. I'll make sure you're apprised.
Next, we have the budget overview presented by Kelly Lecter and Sarah Cox.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent and Attorney DePree Bruno. Before we get started on our budget presentation, I'll answer your question related to triple N funding. So, we did take out a cops to fund that school. However, it will be repaid with capital millage funds is how that works. So, our budget overview for you today will focus on school allocations. We'll talk to you about where we are at in the fiscal year '26 process, even though we're five months into the fiscal year. There's adjustments that go on throughout the year such as day 10. We shared some preliminary information with you all about that back in September, so we wanted to share some final information with you on that today. And then we'll talk about what we're seeing with survey two that was conducted in October. We're also well underway for our fiscal year '27 process. You know, we're typically operating in multiple years as we have one year operating and planning for the subsequent fiscal year. So, we'll talk to you about what that planning process looks like for schools for fiscal year '27. And then the last piece of information that we'll share with you is related to scholarship funding and particularly duplicated students. And what I mean by that is students who were reported in a district school as well as reported as receiving a scholarship through the Family Empowerment Scholarship or the Florida Tax Credit Program. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Lecter.
Thank you. So, just kind of refreshing back to where in previous slides, we, in presentations, we talked about what we were doing moving forward and I just wanted to catch every talked about what we were doing moving forward, and I just wanted to catch everybody up. We said that we would be working with the regional assistant superintendents and principals on issues as they come up, and that is an ongoing process, we do that all year long. Adjustments to the allocations throughout the summer based on new enrollments, of course, that's been completed at this point, because the summer's done. And the adjustments for Day 10 have also been completed. When we did our, and then the next one will be adjustments based on October, actual student FTE and projected February student FTE, we'll be making those changes in December, January timeframe, we'll have those done before the second semester starts. So when we're talking about the FY '26 and what did that look like, let's first talk about Day 10 at our traditional schools and what that looked like. When we do our projections for our schools, there's two different kinds of projections. There's a school-by-school projection, where we determine which school we think will have the FTE. And then there's a district forecast, which is the one that Department of Education works with us just overall. When I'm talking about our changes at the traditional schools, I'm talking about our actual school-by-school projections. We were down 1,474 students from our projection on our school-by-schools at Day 10. We pulled back about $9.2 million from the schools at that time. When we looked at our preliminary Survey 2 numbers, so that would be our October FTE numbers, and I just want to point out, we're looking at this just the piece of our weighted FTE times our base student allocation, times our comparable wage factor. It doesn't include other reductions like class size or ESC guarantee or anything. We are down about 2,083 FTE from the forecast, which is about $7.2 million. That equates into two pieces, that would be our charter schools were down about 618 FTE, which is about $3.5 million, and our district schools were down 1,465 FTE, which is about $3.7 million. So I know the big question here is, why did I pull 9.2 from the schools when it doesn't look like that's what we're going to be losing? Good question. So just so you know, when we allocated to schools in the beginning, if you remember, the legislative session had not ended, so we were working with what was my best guess or projection, and I overprojected. So when you look at our base student allocation and our comparable wage factor, we allocated $104.2 more per weighted FTE than we actually received. So that means that when I allocate more, when the cuts are made, it's going to come back at a higher rate than when we actually make the cuts. Also, our cost factors, so those are the weights that are applied to each level of student and the instruction they receive, so if they're ESC, they get a different weight factor than a basic student. In the whole list of them, they allocated greater in all, but, and I have two, but it was actually three areas I allocated at a higher rate than we actually received. The other area is our ESOL allocations. When we allocate to our schools, we actually allocate additional ESOL allocations to our schools over what is actually received from the state. This is because that was a great area of need that we had. We kind of got hit twice on this one, because not only do we allocate more, but that was the largest area of our decrease that we saw in the FTE, was our ESOL population. So the schools got hit with that double, because they lost their regular allocation and their above allocation for that.
And I want to clarify, we often use the term enrollment or FTE interchangeably, but they don't necessarily mean the same thing. You know, one headcount of a student may not necessarily equal one FTE, and that's because an FTE is based on instructional minutes that that student has earned over the course of the year. So we're specifically talking about FTE and the money that's generated based on that, and also within the context of FTE, we're only talking about ESC pre-K to grade 12 students. This would not include things such as VPK or early childhood.
Thank you. And I want to also point out, on the base student allocation of $104.2, that was an $8.7 million allocated more to the schools than what we actually received for the students, just to give an idea of where that was. So the next thing she talked about that we would be covering is our duplicated students, those students that are also are getting scholarships, are in the personal education program, and were in our schools during the October survey. Right now, we have a duplication of about 546 students. In the Family Empowerment Scholarship Program, there are two different programs that they offer, one is the educational options, and in that group, we had 36 students that were receiving the Family Empowerment Scholarship and in our district schools. Of those, 10 of them after FTE week dropped out of our schools, and then we had three enroll in our schools that were getting Family Empowerment Scholarships after the FTE survey. For unique abilities, we had 451 students that were sitting in our schools and receiving Family Empowerment Scholarships, and the unique abilities is the students with the exceptional student education needs, so these are actually a higher cost factor. And of those, nine dropped after the FTE week, and one added back, came back, or came to the district after that. In the personalized education program of the PEP, as you might know it, we had 59 students that were receiving the PEP and in our schools during Survey 2. So we're not sure, you know, we've been working with the state, providing this information to them, as, you know, we work through this, I'm not sure what they're going to do, but looking at just this group of students, this is about a $4.5 million hit to the district if they don't make an adjustment and we lose for these students, which is what has happened in the past. So talking about the future, right, like, we're in '26 and we're going, but we're already looking on, we're moving on to '27, getting ready for that, so I just want to kind of give you an idea of the timeframe for that. For October, November, and December timeframe, of course, we had Survey 2 in October. We are working with the regionals and select principals on the FY '27 school allocations. We're looking at the allocation formulas, we're working then with them to see what worked, what didn't work, working on some things like the ESOL and the ESC, to see if we can make some adjustments that work better for everybody. We are also starting to work on the district FTE projections, as well as the school-by-school projections for next year. In January and February, we'll be making the adjustments for Survey 2 prior to the second semester. We will be submitting our FTE, our full-time equivalent, to the state, their projections for those for next year. We will be updating the schools' individual files for next year as well, and updating after the batches ran. The legislative session will convene in January this year, which is a really good thing for us, if they stay on their timeline, we'll have the actual information prior to releasing to the schools, and hopefully we won't have that big gap of overprojection or underprojection. And then we should be receiving the governor's budget sometime in January as well. And then March and April, we'll be releasing the district resource allocations to the schools in March. The legislative session will end in early March, and we should receive our first FEFP, Florida Education Finance Program, calculation, which is also called the conference report at that time. And then in May, we will be getting our files back from the schools with their needs for their schools for the following year, based on the student population they will have. July starts our fiscal year, the state will also certify the millages and things by July 19th, and we'll receive what they call our second calculation at that time. And then in August, of course, school begins, and we'll start all over again with our 10-day school adjustments.
So with that, we'll turn it back to you, Board and Superintendent, for any comments and questions that you may have. Dr. Carlin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cox and Ms. Lecter. We always appreciate your budget updates, and this update provides our board with a point in time where we stand as of today. So obviously, there are many items that are discussed here, looking at enrollment, looking at adjustments to FTE, looking at funding, and then looking at opportunities around family empowerment and personalized educational programs. I will tell you that we have been in contact with our legislature regarding the last item I just mentioned, with the duplicates and so forth, and that certainly is something that is being addressed and being looked at, not only by the legislature, but also by the Department of Education. So we do know that that is in the works, that they are looking at these types of issues and working to resolve them, so we do appreciate their work in Tallahassee on this. So look forward to your comments and your questions.
Ms. Chievenelli?
This is actually for the superintendent. So I have a question, it just made me think about this, how is the Acceleration Academy, how is it calculated? Is it calculated in this, or no? Because I wasn't sure, I don't know if you know that answer.
I'm going to look to our budgetary experts on Acceleration Academy.
So the Acceleration Academy is a contracted site, so they earn their FEFP the same way that we earn RFP as one of our, one of our schools, much like PACE does, except for PACE is considered DDJJ, but it's a contracted site, so it's not really a charter, but it earns the same way as a charter does, basically, based on their students.
Ms. Chiviano?
Thank you for putting this information together. I have a question, just in regards to, obviously, the students with duplicates and just any of the duplicates overall, since it is an impact to the district dollars, and the requirement for these funds is not to be in a public school, and we're reporting it back to the DOE and all of that. When they enroll in our system, is there a flag, and we know that? And is there a statute or something that says, hey, you either have to un-enroll and take the funds, or, you know, one or the other, to kind of avoid this in the future?
So, no, there isn't a way for us to flag them and know that they're receiving a scholarship. We depend on the state to send us the payment files for FES and PEP students, and then we run through a process to identify which ones are also enrolled in our public schools. I know the state has been having a lot of conversation about the process, because I think some of the issues are created by the timelines and statute, right? Like, when the state is required to pay new and renewing students of the scholarships, that's where, you know, they're getting that money technically before traditional schools are even starting, so the information is given to us kind of after the fact to review. But like I mentioned, I know the state is looking at this process, and hopefully we'll see some improvements in the future to be able to flag them sooner.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, if we have the flag or are aware, coming in before our next round, is there something we can do prior to the next count? Because, just because, I mean, we don't have extra money anywhere, and yes, everyone deserves the education, but these parents are going after these funds to go a different route. So is there something that we can do?
So I'll take a stab at it, if I can. What I heard from our team was there is no flag, we don't receive notice of that, is that correct?
Until-
Until they enroll in, right, into our system. So those funds are already out there. So that's why we've brought it to the legislature, to one of our delegation members, who is actually looking very closely at this, and we have been in conversation with the Department of Education. So they are aware of the exact issue you're talking about, and they're trying to work through it to see if there's a way to rectify the situation, so we're not in the same situation this time next year.
Yeah, and Mrs. Chiviano, we do know that, you know, when the state realizes there are duplicates, I mean, I know for the most recent round of duplicates that were identified, it was over, you know, 27,000 students across the state. And so what I understand happens is that the scholarship organizations then have to, those students' accounts are frozen once they're identified as duplicates, even though Step Up for Students or AAA, the scholarship funding organizations have already received that money, the student accounts are frozen, and then they're making email or phone call contacts to those parents, trying to confirm, are you enrolled in a public school? If not, there is a withdrawal form that they're required to complete, and that's new this year, but until the SFO receives a response from them, the account is frozen. So essentially, the money's just kind of sitting in limbo. We don't have it, the SFO has it, not necessarily the family, so it's just in limbo until there's a response from the family as to where their student is located.
Mr. Persons?
Just a little bit of insight. The problem is, the students do not all have a student ID number. All our students do, but when they go to a charter school, whatever, I mean, private or a home school and get this money, they just go by their name. So you may have two Sally Smiths, then so then, once they see that, oh, that could be a duplicate, then they gotta try to look at the birthday, then they gotta try to look at other factors. Where if they had a definite student ID number, it would be a very easy fix, and I know that's the Florida School Board Association has asked for that to happen. I know the legislatures are working toward that goal, so we could even do monthly, hopefully, or less than quarterly, updates to know who's where by using those numbers. So that's probably the best answer, from what I understand, listening to the legislatures as a nerd. But that's the problem, they're not, it's not universal way to track these students like it is within all our school systems. I mean, we could quickly tell if one of our students went to another student, I mean, another district within the state. You know, they would use their same ID number, that kind of thing.
But as I recall, wasn't this something we also talked about last time on legislation, we're up as far as IDing these funds and tracking these funds?
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Ms., I just wanted to piggyback, this is, as Dr. Carlin said, everybody's aware of the situation, and it is happening in all the districts as well, and I know that that is a priority of the FSBA as a whole for this. And again, too, it goes back to parents, you know, you know that your child is not there, that's your responsibility to make sure that you're getting this paperwork back in, so that other students and children can be taught. But thank you so much for this presentation. It's really, it's an eye-opener, when you're really looking at the numbers that you're speaking about. So I really appreciate all your work.
Thanks, Dr. Carlin.
I just wanted to piggyback on the conversation, I want to encourage our board that there is no easy fix here, and I think Mr. Persons clearly outlined the challenge. Again, we have to remember the sheer number of students that are enrolled in private schools, charter schools, public schools, traditional public schools, homeschool, there, you know, it's really not an easy fix. And I do want to assure you that, you mentioned FSBA, FADS, my association's been all over it, the legislature is aware of it, the DOE is aware of it. So again, I don't want to, I don't want to leave you with, they're not moving on this. They are, they recognize the enormity of the impact, and we have been assured that they are, they are looking at this and they are working diligently to get this turned around, because it's not just our school district, it's the other 66 that are in the same vote. So just want to assure you that this work is being attended to.
Mr. Persons?
I want to give some kudos to our legislative team, they're also on top of it, reaching out, and, you know, and they get requests for information, we give, but they're giving it back to the state. So, and again, like the superintendent said, it's throughout the whole state. It's an issue, one of those unintended consequences that they didn't put in there right from the very start. But I have confidence it'll get corrected.
So I have two questions, I believe I need to address, one question to you ladies. So we have students who don't attend a public school, and, right here in Lee County and all over the state, after having conversations with our lobbyists, that do not accept Step Up funds, but they are also not public school students. So those students are Lee County students, or Collier County has a situation, and they're in a private institution. Do you know where those students' tax dollars are? They're somewhere. I mean, every student should have an FTE, should have an amount of money, but if they're at a school that doesn't accept Step Up and they don't have FTE numbers, do you have any idea where that money would be?
No, I mean, in my opinion, I don't think they would be receiving any public funding, because the current mechanism is that they're either at a district school, it could be, you know, a traditional school, or a charter that's reporting FTE, or they would be going through one of the scholarship funding organizations, Step Up or AAA, to get their FTE reported that way. So if they're not in one of those mechanisms, they wouldn't be counted for public funding or funding through the FEFP.
I understand that, I was just wondering if you knew where that bucket of money is?
No, ma'am. Well, let me clarify, there is the Florida Tax Credit Scholarship, right, and that money does not run through the FEFP at all. So whether they're accessing that money or not, we would not necessarily know, the only ones we would know of are the ones that are on the file, the state's sending to us to ask us to identify as a potential duplicate.
So there is money out there that's not being used for public education or for a scholarship? Correct?
I mean, I wouldn't say one way or another, right? That's the model of the Florida Tax Credit Scholarship, is for those families to apply and access it, and however they feel best, for their personalized education plan.
Okay. I can have a conversation-
I can have conversations offline with some folks. Um, but my second question is a little off-topic. If we go back to slide six, I know that you discussed, and we've had this conversation in years past where the allocations are given in March and April, and our schools are, seem to have an issue, some of them, over budgeting, um, for, um, and then having to turn around and then do cuts in like the first month of, or the first week of August, or even the late July. Do you have, you want to talk about that, just touch on that just a bit?
I'd be, I'd be happy to, yeah. I'd be happy to. So, um, this is pre Denise Carlin, but, uh, there was a change made while I was retired, uh, relative to the allocation process. And, uh, so I became a co-learner this year as, uh, these allocations, uh, were evaluated upon, um, the 10-day count and, uh, the FTE survey week. And what I found was, you know, with every good model and every good intention, sometimes things work really well, and sometimes there are flies in the ointment. So I view that as a, as a 1.0 rollout of something different, of a, a different way for us to be more transparent with our schools in terms of the dollars that they are receiving based on the students that are walking in the door. And what I mean by that is a traditional student at 1.0 versus a child that may have English as a second language and children that have, um, exceptionalities, what we call ESE. So there was a, a very good attempt at trying to be more transparent. Uh, the challenges were, as were described by our wonderful duo here, that there were some over allocations in some areas, particularly in ESE and ESOL. Uh, some, we affectionately call some of those funding cliffs. Uh, if you didn't have enough students in a bucket, all of a sudden you were losing $200,000 or $300,000. So all with good intentions. I'm not here to criticize, I wasn't here, wasn't part of the process. Um, but what we have learned is that there are some glitches in the, in the, uh, process, and our principals, you have to love it, they're willing to go back to work on it with, in partnership with Budget and our team, to see if we can't, um, shore up some of those areas where we had a handful of schools that lost, um, pretty significant amounts of money. Luckily, it was not everybody, it was a handful. Um, and so we'll take a look at those situations and try to shore up that process, and that's the work that is currently happening with our Budget Team in partnership with our principal, uh, representative. So, um, I commend the team because they stepped out and did something a little different on behalf of transparency. And now we just have to shore up some of those challenges to make sure that, you know, we have a mechanism in place that schools are closely monitoring, particularly their ESOL students coming in the door over the summer, as well as their students with exceptionalities, because we know all of those children are funded differently than the 1.0 FTE. And so I have confidence that our Budget Team and our, our Business Services Team in partnership with our principals, uh, will be doing that work through the fall and into the winter in preparation for, uh, allocations going out next year. Anything you want to add, ladies?
Yeah, um, one of the things that we're doing, um, so that schools aren't caught off-guard, right, is we are, um, setting up what we're calling the mimic of a FTE. So what it is, is they would enter in their original projections or their day 10 projections or whatever, and then once their FTE, their kids are enrolled and everything, and then they can enter in their FTE that they have pulled, pulling from reports straight out of Focus, and it will tell them the areas and, and what's happening, what they need to be looking for in order to better prepare for the reductions that might be coming based on that, based on their actual student population. So that, um, will help them kind of have a heads-up on what might be coming down the road. It's not going to be 100% because, you know, things fluctuate and things change. We do make exceptions for some schools, um, if they have a, a growth pattern, um, like if we see that normally they would grow between day 10 in October or day 10 in February, we'll leave the numbers out there so their loss might not be what they think, but at least it gives them some idea of what they could be looking at in, uh, making some arrangements ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I knew that, we, we've talked about this. I just, um, and I know that you all are coming up with a plan to assist our principals that may not be as privy to, to this, and maybe even our newer principals, some, some sort of training or something. So thank you. And thank you both for the presentation. Not only was it very well organized, I thought, very well explained, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, terrific. Let's move on to, um, our job descriptions review. Presenting is Dr. Shannon Johnson.
All right, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Carlin and Attorney Dupree Bruno. We bring before you today one job description, the Senior Coordinator of Community Partnerships out of the Strategy Division, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Any questions, Board Members, about this job description? Ms. Chivinelli?
This is on the agenda tonight, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So how soon will you advertise if this is approved tonight?
I believe tomorrow is the plan.
Okay, and then how long do you plan on having it posted and like, what's your, I guess, what's your timeline?
Um, that would be up to the Chief of the Strategy Division. And so, um, usually we advertise for five to 10 days, and then, um, bring forward a recommendation to the next board meeting.
Who does this, this position report to?
It reports to the Director of Strategic Planning and Portfolio Management.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, next we have our Policy Review First Reading, Pre-Briefing, presented by Kathy Dupree Bruno. Give her a few minutes to walk over.
Okay, Madam Chair, there are three policies that are before you. I don't know if there's any questions?
Board Members, any questions? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Uh, for 01641, I know we talked about Board Member Participation Changes potentially. Um, I do not support any changes to that policy. Uh, I believe based on participation now that we've had over the couple of years, it's been coming up on us to figure that out, so, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Well, he just, he just spoke for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
I, I also agree with that, but I had a question on, uh, Policy 7105, the Site Selection Committee. That's a pretty potent committee. I just wonder if we should not have a Board Liaison on that possibly, to report back to the Board what's sort of going on. I know it's not in there, and something we could add later or something along those lines.
Ms. Jordan, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, because this is part of the way that we have structured it now. Anytime we have a site, um, selection committee, they would be, um, pulled out of, that was to be pulled out or part of DAC. Am I, if I'm correct?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so if, if we could, um, just a little clarification. So this is the 7150, the reason that it was being requested to be changed is because we no longer have EDAC, which was part of that, that, um, that policy. And then there was discussion last month about trying to make it an odd number and where would we pull from the odd number. So I'm going to defer to the Superintendent as these particular recommendations are her recommendations.
Sure, and I think you outlined it beautifully, Mr. Dupree Bruno, in terms of instead of the election from the, the EDAC, it would be more from the DAC.
Any other questions or follow-up? Ms. Chivinelli?
I was trying to find the language for the Ad-Hoc Committee because I know I had read it, the, the last meeting. If you could help clarify, because I don't know if it's in this one or if it's in the 7250, but, um, you know, for, for, um, I thought it said parent, parental, uh, you know, part of, parents being part of that committee. And yet, again, today, we had two committees that they were parents slash teachers, which, you know, that, that, that's two hats, and I, I feel like we need to have, we, we get deemed for not having enough community involvement. So I think that it's key to make sure that we have community involvement, and I didn't really see that in, in either one of those selection, um, processes that we saw earlier today. So I, can you show me where, tell me where that's at exactly?
So this policy pulls from DAC, which is representatives from your SACs at your school, which, uh, many of those are parents. And basically, the change is so that it follows the enrollment zones to ensure that you have somebody from each zone from DAC that is represented. And then there is, um, I believe, um, one administrative designated from the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, but the problem with that is, it's, there's still, the, DAC also consists of parents slash teachers as well, and so therefore, that community piece kind of gets negated. I, I'm just not quite happy without knowing that our community is involved. I mean, the feedback and making sure that community involvement is, for me, it's very, um, essential. So I don't know how we can make that correction, or, and I'm asking for the Board, if others agree with me or not, I don't know, but I think it's, it's important. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, uh, I believe when it was 9140, when it was under EDAC, it was another number than it was 9140, and then we got rid of, there was no such thing as EDAC, it, it was dissolved. Even there, on that committee, it was still, the members of EDAC was the, um, became the Site Committee. So it, it really hasn't changed anything, it's just that they changed, it went to DAC instead of EDAC, and it's still like the same people from the, it's, actually, it's a larger group, because if you, if you imagine what you had at EDAC, which you sat on that committee, and now you have one, and this is two from each of the regions, so that gives you more opportunity to have parent participation, uh, teacher participation, everybody's particip- and they choose, they actually choose who would be on there. So it would be amongst them, so, yes.
Dr. Carlin?
I was going to agree with you, Ms. Jordan. Um, the, the beautiful part about DAC is that it is a subset of each school's SAC, right? And so, sitting on a SAC would be a, a number of teachers, a number of support folks, and then parents, and then a community member or more. So again, going back to many years of experience leading schools, that is a, that's a legal requirement, we must have those folks. Now, it is acknowledged that, you know, there has to be somebody that steps up to be the DAC representative, right? So that's, you know, again, because we are leaning on volunteers, it's very difficult to require one particular member of a SAC to say, you will be the DAC member. We really leave it to the School Advisory Committee to have that discussion with their members, and then to submit a person who is willing and eager to do that. And the other piece I would add, um, is that we also have somebody from what we're hoping will be the Planning Committee, uh, coming out of the county. So I would argue that that is a community member, somebody that is providing, um, some, some extra support and information about where the sites should be located based on infrastructure, based on what has, you know, what's happening in that neck of the woods. I think in my personal opinion, that has been something that has been missing, uh, because there may be a group of parents and/or community members or teachers that say, I like that site, then the county might come in and say, oh my goodness, we, you know, we have some things that aren't quite ready infrastructure-wise, but maybe this site would be better. So it gives some healthy discussion in that committee with different representatives, with different levels of knowledge about our community. So I would argue, I, I really like the composition because it crosses all regions, plus it puts somebody from the county, which we have not had in prior years, that is able to look at infrastructure, look at roads, look at all of the things we look at that are important when we're selecting a site.
Thank you for reminding me that, of the county piece of it, and thank you for adding that, because that is, I remember now you telling me in the 101, and I actually love that, so, um, because I think that's a piece that has been missing. So, okay, I, I think you won me over on that one. Thank you.
And if, Madam Chair, if we can go back to 0164.1, just so I have direction as to whether or not the Board does want to amend this policy. Ms. Chivinelli?
I actually would agree with, with what Mr. Fisher said, and I think, um, I don't, I think down there, yeah, Ms. Jordan, I think, and I think, I think Armored did too. So yet, no, I would, actually, I would, um, support exactly what he said. I don't think we need to change anything. Um, I would agree. Thank you.
Do you have your direction? Yes, I do. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to, um, we have the Plan for the Student Enrollment of 2026, 2027. This will be a briefing first reading by, presented by Samantha Fields and Clayton Simmons.
All right, good afternoon, Board Members, Dr. Carlin and Attorney Dupree Bruno. I'm Clayton Simmons, the Executive Director for the Office of Student Assignment and Administration, and I'm happy to have here with Sam Fields, the Assistant Director of the Student, of Student Assignment. Um, I just want to remind you all that you had, received a copy of the Red Line Read-Through document as well as the executive summary, and then we are going to briefly go through the changes that were made, and then if you have questions at the end. Um, I do want to point out that, uh, the body of the, of the document has been organized and switched around so that it has better organization and flow. And then, um, you'll take note that Elementary School L will be added as a choice option for, for Zone L, and that will be the new elementary school housed on the site of Lee High Senior High School. Roman numeral four defines the addition of Bayshore, Hector A. Caffretta Jr., and James Stevens as middle school options. The name changes will be pending Board approval. Bayshore is added to the Middle School Proximity Zone CC, and Hector A. Caffretta Jr. is added to the Middle School Proximity Zone AA. I do want to point out that currently there's, um, significant boundary work is underway for middle school Zones AA and CC to support the opening of the new Hector A. Caffretta Jr., K8. Our goal is to present the final boundary recommendations for these two zones at the December meeting. This will, this timeline will allow for appropriate student distribution among the middle schools in both Zones AA, as well as the broader Cape Coral area. And that work is being done by the Boundary or Zone Committee. Roman numeral five, uh, has the addition of the High School Selection Sheet. Believe it or not, that was not in the enrollment plan, and Sam caught that, so we are now adding our high schools into the, uh, the plan. And also, Island Coast High School will no longer be an option for Zone E1. It was previously an E1, and that was a, a pretty substantial, uh, busing issue, so we, we are, and it was really for a relatively few number of students, so we decided that that, that was not a good option. But they will still be an option for W3.
All right, so also included in the plan, um, we defined what sibling placement is. Um, so under Roman numeral six, it just specifies and defines, uh, sibling placement during the open enrollment window. Uh, parents or guardians are responsible to ensure that the siblings are connected via parent name and, uh, address, and this is done in their focus parent portal to ensure that the addresses are most current. And if the siblings are not properly linked in focus, it does risk the possibility of them being split up amongst different schools. All right, in addition to our 26, 27- And this, we hope, will decrease the wait times for in-person appointments and walk-ins, and increase the online portal registrations. And then lastly, we just added the piece about transportation. So the plan, in several sections, does emphasize that the students that reside in P1, which is less than two miles to the school, will not receive district transportation. And just a reminder to the families, that all transportation decisions are made by the Transportation Department. All right. And at this time, we'll open up for any comments or questions.
Dr. Carlin?
So thank you very much, Mr. Simmons and Ms. Fields, for your update here. We look forward to the board's discussion today. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to piggyback off something Mr. Simmons said, and more just for the public, I appreciate this. We obviously had our proximity change for middle school that, especially in Cape Coral, had a lot of shifts, where some schools, such as Mariner Middle and Challenger, have less students versus Diplomat Middle, Trafalgar &amp; Gulf. So I appreciate you guys looking at that and trying to balance that a little bit better. So, thank you.
Board members, any other comments or questions? Ms. Chivinelli?
Regarding the no waiver for second semester 11th grade, what if a student moves? What happens then?
So that if they are moving out of zone, so they do have, because they would be in 11th, at the end of 11th grade or 12th grade, they are able to remain for the remainder of the school year, due to them being in 12th grade, so that they can graduate at that same school. So they are able to remain out of zone for the rest of that school year on a moving waiver, which provides them the opportunity to remain there just without transportation. If they do need transportation and it becomes a hardship, then we would be able to move them to an in-zone school for the family.
Thank you.
Regarding that bullet point on Slide 7, it's the third bullet point, does that affect students who want to transfer schools regardless of moving? For example, second semester 11th grade, and they are choosing to move schools for whatever reason, does that prevent them from being able, are we preventing that now? I mean, we're this, I'm not talking about a student who's moved, I'm talking about a student who wants to transfer to a school post-second semester 11th grade.
So that's their last opportunity. So for 11th graders, so right now, we're actually, the window is open. So this would be their last opportunity to transfer, because they wouldn't be able to for 12th grade. So exactly like you said, so if they're looking for a different school, and they did not move, then that would be their last opportunity.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. All right, thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation, and have a great afternoon. We're going to move on now to our district strategic priorities. This will be presented, oh, about recruitment and retention. This will be presented by Dr. Shannon Johnston, Karina Velasquez, Dr. Ron Iarussi, Suzette Rivera, and Dr. Rebecca Savage. And hopefully, we have enough chairs for all of you.
All right. Good afternoon, once again. I am happy to introduce this amazing, part of this, of the amazing HR leadership team. We have Dr. Ron Iarussi, who's the Senior Director of Labor Relations, and Dr. Rebecca Savage, who is the Director of Organizational Development and Retention. Then we have Suzette Rivera, who is the Director of HR Operations, and Karina Velasquez, who is our Executive Director of Human Resources. All right. So today, we are going to share our HR update as it is related to the strategic plan, and how we align ourselves to not only the district's strategic plan, but the district's priorities, our organizational structure, our framework of execution, and our overall division goal. Which then, each of our departments, which you can see on the screen, we have seven departments within HR, how they have aligned their department goals to our overall division goal, they're going to share those goals, their Quarter 1 results with you, and their wins. And finally, we are going to have a summary and next steps. And as you can see, you all have a pinwheel. The pinwheel represents the life cycle of an employee, and how all of these different departments within HR, they represent each part of an employee's life cycle. All right? So, for example, talent acquisition. They get the employees in, they're first, right? And so on and so forth. So I am, I have an elementary school heart, and so that's where this come from, this comes from. So I apologize, but we have to have a little fun, right? Okay. So I'll begin by, I'm just sharing that, you know, HR really serves as the foundation of the organization. We touch and support many of the KPIs within the district strategic plan, but through the people of many, we have many different groups of people within our organization. And, but HR owns recruiting, developing, and retaining highly effective staff, specifically KPI 6.1, which is to reduce employee turnover for each employee segment. You will see references throughout the presentation of all the different KPIs that HR supports throughout the organization, not just the KPI 6.1. So I'm going to go over our results for the priority that we own in the district strategic plan. If you look at the bottom, you can see that the teachers, our baseline when we first started was at 16.2% separation. That means they have separated from our organization. And '23, '24, we were at 15.6. '24, '25, we're at 14%. We are headed in the right direction. Quarter 1 results, so far this year, we have separated with 2.7% of our teachers. We heard you all, when we updated last time, and the strategic plan says that we need to reduce by 1% each year. Well, that is not going to get us what we need with the amount of growth that we have in the schools that we're building. We're figuring we need around 300 teachers in the next four years, in addition to what we already have. And so, you'll see in a few minutes how we have aligned ourselves with a different goal that's more rigorous. You can see with staff, support staff, we're also headed in the right direction, moving from 15% in '23, '24 to 14%. And with administrators, we went up a notch, 1% from 8% to 9% terminations. So more specifically, while the strategic plan focuses on all employee groups, the strategic priorities for HR is specific to teacher recruitment and retention. And this is what we have aligned our HR goal to, is teacher retention. In July, we organized HR into three houses: human capital operations, employee relations, and organizational development and retention. As you can remember, we strategically added organizational development and retention as a new department that didn't exist before, so that we could tackle employee retention. And also, if you recall, all the areas in the light blue were gaps that did not exist, and we are currently building out. So this is our overall HR division that aligns to the district priority that we believe are going to get us to what we need. It is our wildly important goal to increase teacher retention to 95%, while allowing for retirements and promotions. This is much more than the 1% a year. We're hoping to grow about, let's see, 9% this year. That is our goal. So then, first quarter, our first quarter cohort comparison from last year to this year, and we do have a specific cohort that we're tracking for this goal, that allows for retirements and promotions. We are about in the same place at this time than we, as we were at this time last year. However, if you look at the cohort count, we have more teachers this year than we had last year. We just began Project Thrive, which is our initiative on teacher retention at the end of September. So we hope the next time we come to you, we will have more distinct results. And you'll hear more about Project Thrive in just a few minutes. So our HR division is using the four disciplines of execution to drive the work around teacher retention. 40X is a framework that helps teams move from strategy to results by focusing on what matters most and executing with discipline. The first discipline is focusing on the wildly important goal, which you saw, is for us to increase teacher retention by 95, to 95%. The second discipline is to act on lead measures, which each HR department identifies key actions that directly influence retention. For example, faster hiring, recertification support, so on and so forth. The third discipline is to keep a compelling scoreboard. Our teams are tracking progress visually, so everyone knows whether we're winning, or whether we're not, and if we need to adjust on the spot. The fourth discipline is creating a cadence of accountability: regular check-ins to ensure progress, remove barriers, and celebrate wins. We share these with you in the board updates every week, and also with our cabinet every week. We have a report out, and we share this also with the school leadership every week. That's our accountability. Everyone knows whether we're winning or whether we're losing. Each HR department has a blueprint, that is their action plan detailing out these four disciplines. This is a work in progress. Our HR division is learning together through the framework, as we try to activate results for our district. Together, every department drives the shared goal of teacher retention, retaining great teachers, so that our students can reach the highest potential, and we can reach our collective goal of becoming a school district. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Director of Human Resources, Karina Velasquez, who will introduce us to the life cycle of an employee in our school district. She will introduce each department within HR, as we walk you through the rest of the presentation, which focuses on each department's goals, strategies, results so far, and the department wins. And I just have to say, I am extremely proud of the team and all that they have accomplished in such a short time. Karina?
Awesome. All right. So pull out your little spinners, and let's spin into the first segment, and you'll notice the animated GIF appear. We're going to start with talent acquisition and HR operations, which is the engine of human resources. And with that, Suzette Rivera.
All right. Thank you, Karina. Good afternoon, everyone. So I am very excited to kick off our presentation to highlight the critical work being executed by our talent acquisition team. Their strategy is centered on not just bringing in the best candidates, but making sure that they stay and that they thrive. This is captured in our two wildly important goals, or whom you call them "WIGs." So the team is committed to retaining 95% of first-year teachers. And in addition, they are laser-focused in filling 100% of core instructional vacancies with a certified teacher by the first day of school next year. One of the most powerful levers we have for filling teacher vacancies is the retention of current staff. Retention is the new recruitment, and we cannot afford to lose the talent who is already here. This work includes fostering engagement with teachers. We're currently conducting stay interviews and creating some networking events. We're also focused on creating a positive culture of support at the district level, where HR recognizes the success and efforts of our teachers through social media, handwritten cards, and personal visits. So here are the early results of the team's first WIG, which is the retention of 95% of first-year teachers employed in Lee County. So our defined subgroup for this goal includes our temporary teacher intern certificate candidates, who actually transitioned into teachers after their internship, College of Education graduates, and TPG international teachers. At the end of last year, we retained 91% of this subgroup. As of Quarter 1, we are, we've currently retained 97% for this specific subgroup, so we're well on our way. And then to highlight the achievement of the team from this past year, Project Believe took us where no one thought was possible. Due to this initiative and the dedication of the team, we started the school year with a record of 39 teaching vacancies, which equals to less than 1% of total instructional positions. That was a great transition here to our second WIG, which is starting the school year next year with those 100% core instructional vacancies filled with a certified teacher. Through targeted recruitment strategies and strengthened talent pipelines, we will achieve this goal. The team has remained committed to filling both current vacancies and creating sustainable pipelines for future growth. Our current strategies to achieve the second WIG will position the district to begin the next school year with zero teaching vacancies in the core areas. To do this, the team is executing a three-pronged recruitment strategy. First, we are leveraging virtual and in-person events to connect directly with candidates. Second, we are deepening our community connections to source our local talent. Finally, we are increasing our marketing engagement to ensure that we are the employer of choice in the community. Beyond immediate recruitment, our long-term success hinges on building robust future teacher pipelines. With our partners, we've established several key programs, and even a few more that are coming soon. I won't go through each one here on the screen, but we'll just highlight a few. So our Temporary Teacher Internship Certificate, or TTIC, allows us to hire eligible candidates to serve as a teacher of record before they officially graduate from an approved College of Education. Cultivating internal talent is the key to growth of our current employees. In partnership with our local university, the FGCU School Personnel to Teacher Pathway Program, or SSPP, enables our school support staff to earn a BA in education and become certified teachers at no cost. We continue to expand our internship opportunities with various colleges and universities. Currently, we have active MOUs with 39 programs, and that number continues to grow. So here is the early progress towards our second WIG. This time last year, our district had 211 instructional vacancies. So let that sink in for a minute. Now, this slide states that we were at 27 instructional vacancies, but as you're aware, this is a moving target. But I am super proud to say that due to the team's relentless efforts, we are down to 20 instructional vacancies in core areas, with no core vacancies in our risk level three or four schools. So we have several key wins to spotlight for the talent acquisition team this quarter, and I will go through a few. The team has successfully contacted 754 employee candidates within 24 hours of their exposure to the team. This is a huge commitment we have to providing timely responses. In a few weeks, we're also excited to launch our first signing day to celebrate our upcoming College of Education graduates from local universities. These graduates are ready for hire, and we want to start them off with a powerful send-off to show them how excited we are to welcome them as teachers in our classrooms. So once the talent is onboard, the focus shifts to our HR operations team. If talent acquisition is the engine that brings in the talent, HR operations is the support structure that manages the critical processes and compliance necessary to keep the talent in the classroom. Compromised of our HR generalists, credential specialists, business partners, and retirement manager, this team's core mission is to excel in customer service. We continue to expand our internship opportunities with various colleges and universities. Currently, we have active MOUs with 39 programs, and that number continues to grow. So here is the early progress towards our second WIG. This time last year, our district had 211 instructional vacancies, so let that sink in for a minute. Now, this slide states that we were at 27 instructional vacancies, but as you're aware, this is a moving target. But I am super proud to say that due to the team's relentless efforts, we are down to 20 instructional vacancies in core areas, with no core vacancies in our risk level three or four schools. Oh. All right. So we have several key wins to spotlight for the talent acquisition team this quarter, and I will go through a few. The team has successfully contacted 754 employee candidates within 24 hours of their exposure to the team. This is a huge commitment we have to providing timely responses. In a few weeks, we're also excited to launch our first signing day to celebrate our upcoming College of Education graduates from local universities. These graduates are ready for hire, and we want to start them off with a powerful send-off to show them how excited we are to welcome them as teachers in our classrooms. So once the talent is onboard, the focus shifts to our HR operations team. If talent acquisition is the engine that brings in the talent, HR operations is the support structure that manages the critical processes and compliance necessary to keep the talent in the classroom. Compromised of our HR generalists, credential specialists, business partners, and retirement manager, this team's core mission is to excel in customer service and efficiency, and they are channeling that into their primary wig listed here. The HR operations team is committed to ensuring that 95% of teachers with expiring certifications are successfully recertified for the next school year. I'd like to begin by outlining our strategic focus within HR operations. The team centers our efforts on excelling in customer service with our partners across three key areas. Our first priority is adopting a proactive approach to the recertification process. Second, we are focused on optimizing our workflows to ensure the HR operations team delivers service with maximum efficiency. Finally, we aim to strengthen the partnership with school and department leaders through clarity and transparency in the hiring process. Project Renew is our initiative to recertify at least 95% of teachers in our district. As a team, we knew that our past practice of simply sending expiration emails wasn't enough, as it only resulted in around 700 to 875 annual renewals, as you can see here. We initiated Project Renew, shifting to an intensive proactive outreach strategy. Beyond the more frequent emails that were sent earlier in the year, monthly tracking tools have been built by one of our team members, Lindsay Boils, and shared with each school principal. These tracking tools now allow principals and HR in partnership to monitor all expiring credentials and assignments. We've also scheduled in-person and virtual meetings to provide personalized support to our staff. These strategies are already showing us some positive results. Last year at this time, we had 98 teachers recertified, and this year, we have 130 teachers recertified, which is 32 more than last year. Our second strategic focus is enhancing our team synergy by finding opportunities to make our internal processes more efficient. The second WIG has us reducing our average processing time for instructional hires from preliminary offer notification to preboarding. We are targeting a reduction from 19.94 days down to 15 days. It's important to note, though, that unlike some organization where that term, time to fill, is controlled solely by HR, we measure the time it takes our team to process a hire after a school submits a forward hire request through PeopleSoft. And to maintain our focus, we've developed a compelling scoreboard, which you can see on the screen, where each HR generalist is tracking their processing time weekly. Our proactive monitoring is already yielding results. Last year at this time, we were averaging a processing time of 16.78 days. We just celebrated an amazing week in October, where our averaging processing time dropped to just 10.72 days. The scope of work managed by our HR operations team is immense. Our team processed a total of 9,349 transactions between July 1st and October 15th of this year. Considering we have over 10,000 employees across this organization, this high volume is managed by our HR operations team, which speaks volumes about their dedication to the work. And here's our final strategic focus, which we are super excited to share with you, and this is in building a stronger partnership with our school leaders. And we achieve this by giving them now immediate access to accurate HR data. This transparency helps them act quickly, stay compliant, and keep their classrooms staffed with qualified teachers. Specifically, our new data tools offer two critical views. The certification and out-of-field snapshot, which is on the left, displays the current teacher certification status and out-of-field assignments. This allows our principals to proactively manage compliance. And then on the right is our HR hiring snapshot, which tracks key personnel actions in real time. Everything from preboarding and fingerprinting to e-verify and PeopleSoft processing. Now principals can monitor their staffing compliance and see exactly where all of their new hires are in the pipeline. And I'm going to transition back to Karina.
All right. Let's pull out your spinners one more time, and follow with me as we continue to navigate through the employee lifecycle. We're going to proceed to organizational development and retention. You've heard all about the engine to get the folks in, and now it's how do we retain them? And with that, we have Dr. Rebecca Savage.
Thank you so much. All right. While organizational development and retention is honored to drive the core work of our teacher retention initiative, Project Thrive, in the top right-hand corner there, we're simultaneously committed to a variety of bodies of work in support of developing our organization as a whole and supporting retention across all employee groups. This slide highlights some of our key work as a new department supporting these areas. Next, we will dive into one of our most exciting programs, Project Thrive. Project Thrive is our major teacher retention initiative aimed at accomplishing our divisional HR goal of retaining at least 95% of our school-based instructional staff. In order to accomplish this wildly important goal, we've committed to providing specialized support to our schools with higher retention needs. We have created a Project Thrive dashboard, providing schools with clear and transparent retention data, and we meet with these schools at least monthly to provide data, resources, and systems to support increasing teacher retention at each school site. Here's a snapshot of our annual timeline for our Project Thrive schools. First, we created teacher retention goals for each school and established an in-the-moment plan to support teacher retention within our organization in the event a teacher provides notification of intent to separate from the district. At number two, we launched a teacher retention pre-assessment survey that is used as an ongoing needs assessment for our schools, focusing on assessing the strength of our retention supportive systems. For number three, we established and provided individualized support for school retention teams, who support the continuous improvement of retention systems, creating and improving the conditions for teachers to thrive. For number four, we then created a system, uh, for and commitment to both lag and lead measure tracking for our team and the school's team goals. Five, we provide consistent communication and collaboration with schools and HR to support teacher retention across the entire organization. And last but not least, we're looking forward to completing our full annual survey cycle to be revisited at the mid-year and end of year to evaluate the effectiveness of Project Thrive and provide a continuous improvement path for FY '27 and beyond. Thrive focuses on direct, consistent support for schools and teachers. We've prioritized working with our schools with the lowest retention rates, providing individualized support bi-weekly for our tier-three schools and monthly for our tier-two schools, and providing all schools with a Project Thrive toolkit and monthly leadership development for all school administrators, supporting the strength of their retention, retention systems monthly. We also provide a direct line of communication to teachers through our new Pulse and Perks monthly newsletter, including Adjust for Teachers Pulse Check Survey, where we ask our teachers to engage directly with us about their perceptions of the support that they receive from our organization. Uh, it's a consistent needs assessment, along with the wellness and wellbeing resources, providing opportunities to directly connect with our district. We actively track our retention status at the district, region, and school levels. Here you can see a snapshot of our regional teacher retention status, along with the status of our organization as a whole. On the right-hand side is a bar chart just more clearly breaking down our regional layout. And then in order to achieve our wildly important goal, we believe that our key lever is building capacity through retention in our schools. We partner with principals and school-based retention teams, meeting monthly to support the strength of teacher retention systems across the organization. We track this commitment and have met our month-one goal for Project Thrive, working with 100% of our tier-two and tier-three schools. And like I said in the beginning, uh, Project Thrive is a, is a huge lift. Uh, our whole division is behind us, and our department is very proud to be undertaking this work. Uh, but we also encompass, uh, a wide body of work, um, from the first slide, and just some key highlights from our wins from the first quarter. We're very proud. Uh, we also support the evaluation system, and we launched a new school nurse evaluation system process. Um, we also support leadership development, and, uh, recently, we, uh, got to train at the superintendent's cabinet, uh, a refresher on the four essential roles of leadership, a follow-up from our goal this year, um, throughout the summer ending in October, uh, of 100% of our administrators across our organization receiving Franklin Covey's The Four Essential Roles of Leadership. We also support new teacher development. We had, uh, a big kickoff of our summer new teacher training camps, and we continue that training camp process throughout the year. And of course, last but not least, we're very proud of Project Thrive. And with that, I will, uh, let Ms. Velasquez take it away.
All right. Pull out your little spinners one more time as we proceed in the employee lifecycle. We're going to talk about employee relations and what it means for growth, performance, accountability, professional standards, and with that, we have Dr. Ron Irucci.
Well, thank you, Karina. Uh, good afternoon, board members. Dr. Carlin, Attorney Deputy Bruno. Um, as Ms. Velasquez stated, we, I am, uh, the Senior Director of Employee Relations, and actually, we have quite a few houses within our big house of employee relations. We include labor relations, benefits, benefits and wellness, professional standards, and compensation are all part of labor relations. Um, and as you can see, all of, you could imagine, all of those departments play a key role in supporting all of our employees by providing them the support necessary so that they can have a successful experience from hire to retire. Um, our wildly important, important goal that supports the 95% retention in HR is by June 30th, 2026, 95% of our principals will be trained on the most frequently grieved contract articles to help reduce grievances and support teacher retention. And the reason we, we thought about this goal is, as you can imagine, our principals are primarily our boots-on-the-ground folks that are responsible for the implementation with the fidelity of our collective bargaining agreements. And as we track phone calls and issues that come up in labor management, and even some grievance, uh, issues, we have realized that typically it's, it's due to a misinterpretation of the contract, or maybe not clarity that's provided. Many of our principals weren't there when the contract was negotiated, and sometimes the intentionality of some of the language needs clarification. So we feel, is, if we can continue to educate our principals on really the complexity and the issues, uh, that are included in the contract, we'll have a much better job of, of, uh, solving some of those issues before they're started at the building level. Um, some strategies that we have to achieve our wildly important goal is, we are in the process of implementing a case management system. So we are working very closely with IT to have a case management system so that we can track on a regular basis the phone calls and some of the emails that we get regarding some issues. Uh, again, I talked about principal trainings on all of new language in the collective bargaining agreements. Every month, we have an opportunity to, to, uh, present in front of our principals, so we present them with scenarios so that they can work together to, to, uh, help, uh, think about what issues that might come up in some of those scenarios and how they would resolve them at the building level. And we also have monthly Labor Management Committee meetings, and that's where we really work closely with both TALC and SPALC on a monthly basis to talk about issues so that we can kind of resolve them before they get to the grievance level. Up to this point, 100% of our principals have received information, uh, on the following. So implementation procedures for the nine additional minutes, where, which is part of the tentative agreement that you'll be, uh, reviewing this evening. Uh, all changes to the TALC tentative agreement, uh, meeting requirements that are in the collective bargaining agreement, uh, planning language, progressive discipline, and the types of leaves and processes, uh, involved are all part of the training we have up to this point. Uh, some labor and employee relations wins. Um, very proud to say we have a SPALC collective bargaining agreement, uh, that will carry us through this year. That was ratified and approved, and actually, our payouts went out to SPALC on October 31st. Um, we are, do have a tentative agreement that will be before you tonight. TALC has ratified the, uh, tentative agreement, and we will have, uh, hopefully payout, uh, which I'll address here in an upcoming slide. And our contract committee. So we have had both, uh, our contract committees that involve both SPALC and TALC. Uh, very pleased to say that the Insurance Task Force has made the recommendations, again, that you will see tonight, uh, at the board meeting for, uh, the next plan year, uh, as far as our medical, uh, and prescription benefits. And we do have a recommendation to the board for two years' worth of calendar, instructional Uh, on the benefit side, some wins that we have from them, uh, the first time in a long time, we actually have a fully-staffed team, and with the changes that we're anticipating in, in benefits, those folks are going to be busy here, especially when it comes to January during the open enrollment period. Um, we have, uh, a plan that we feel reduces the deficit, projected deficit of $28 million down to below almost a quarter of a million dollars. Uh, we are in the process of doing an internal audit, uh, and we have projected over $1.3 million in savings just by auditing our processes, uh, and, and carrying out with the rest of the audit. Uh, we do, we do have, uh, some, uh, proposed, uh, savings that we might, uh, see in, in Family and Medical Leave Act by looking at our policies and really our processes for making sure that we have accurate information, uh, of people when they apply for FMLA, and, and our processes are there to support those folks as well. And on the wellness side, uh, we talk about this on a monthly basis. I know you know Heather Parker and her team and the, the accomplishments that they've had in wellness. Um, and then they're, uh, from April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025, they've reached their goal of 76% of employee participation in the wellness incentive programs. Again, that key continues to grow on a yearly basis, and really, the, the significance of that is in the next, uh, couple bullets, which should include the fiscal year 25 impact, so 29, almost $30 million in savings through wellness initiatives, and we measure that through cost avoidance. As people participate in wellness initiatives, they become healthier, and that's through cost avoidance. All of this has been, uh, verified by Aon for the accuracy. Uh, in the last 11 years, the projected, uh, or estimated savings has been almost $300 million, and again, healthcare avoidance over 11 years, uh, which results also in employees saving on an average of $227 per month in their healthcare premium costs, thanks to the wellness programs. Uh, from the compensation side, some compensation wins. Uh, we have just completed Schedule N, uh, which typically follows SPALC, so the same process that we use for SPALC, the collection of all of our work experience and the application of that work experience to help place them accurately within the pay grades that are, have been, uh, approved by this board, are, are in place, and the salary adjustments are scheduled for November 26th. So all of our Schedule N folks will receive their salary adjustments. TALC and SPALC, obviously, I, I mentioned what we've done with SPALC and the contract and their implementation. Obviously, the tentative agreement is, will be before you tonight. If that's passed, we are looking at a December 15th payout for all of our instructional staff. Uh, on the school-based administrative side, we've been working very closely with an advisory group of school-based administrators. Uh, we are looking at implementation of a, a salary schedule that, uh, many of our administrators feel as, as well as we do on, from the HR standpoint, that is very transparent, uh, simple to figure out, uh, and, and really, uh, I think a lot of our school-based administrators have appreciated the work that's been done into that. That will be for implementation for fiscal year '27, so next year. We have a couple, uh, more parts of that that we'll be working on throughout the year, but we expect to fully implement that plan in FY '27. Uh, that plan includes rubrics that include risk levels, years of experience, grade levels, and impact measures. Uh, our school-based administrators, along with our central office administrators, in that transition period, will receive their cost of living adjustment for this, this year, and they will be paid on December 15th as well. Along the same lines for our district administrators, as you know, we previously presented in a board workshop all the work that the compensation team has been doing in Phase Two, and that really, again, is the evaluation of all of our departments and the positions within those departments to make sure that all of our job descriptions are accurate, and that all of our folks are placed appropriately based on the job descriptions on the right pay grades. And so as they continue that work, uh, hopefully, we'll, we'll finish that next spring, but in transition, all of our district-level administrators will receive their cost of living increase on December 15th as well. And again, this is just a reminder that this is a continual process, so once we, we finish for the year, we start all over again to make sure that we're accurate, and that will be ongoing. Just again, a, a group timeline, which you've seen in previous meetings, and where we're at. Next up, we have ESE, Health Services, Payroll, uh, Maintenance, Psych Services, Food, uh, Food and Nutrition, and Operations are all slated for the end of these years, as far as Phase Two is concerned. Uh, so professional standards, I believe, is the last group that we're going to talk about. Uh, they have a specific wildly important goal. By June 30th, 26, 2026, 95, 95% of school-based teacher discipline outcomes will require a mandatory training element. And so this is something that I think that the professional standards, uh, uh, group has been really diligent on working to really educate as many folks and give them the training they need so that we don't have recidivism rates with teacher discipline. Some of the strategies to achieve that, completed items and, and drafts, I'm not sure if you understand what FRISK is, but FRISK is basically a training that we give to all of our administrators, employees, on really the whole disciplinary process. So, uh, from investigations all the way down to outcomes and how that's conducted, uh, they're creating letters to be involved in that, uh, they're creating rubrics for administrators to, to use so that help them make some decision about disciplinary outcomes. They've given an, an investigation flowchart so they know where they're at in the process and who to call if they need to. Uh, and then discipline outcome rubrics, again, so not only at our school base, but also for ORT and those folks, uh, responsible for some of the decisions on employee discipline, we're implementing rubrics to make sure that we have consistency and transparency in how we, how we make some of those decisions. make some of those decisions. Some quarter one results. So we've had so far this year, 31 cases opened. We had 16 at this point in 2024-25. And to provide a transparent system and really help educate all of our employees so that they don't get to the point where they need to be in professional standards. Some of their wins, maintenance and Talc trainings, again, as I said, they take their show on the road. They've been out to different buildings and some of our compounds around maintenance and transportation, just to provide FRIC training and to talk a little bit about how to stay out of trouble. Complaint resolutions finalized, over 70 complaints in the past month. They are really working very hard on increasing the time between when a case arrives to them and delivering a final outcome. The Professional Standards process, again, the initial standard, the initial draft of Professional Standards Investigation Flowchart and the communication cadence is all part of what they've accomplished so far in a short time since Mike Harris has taken over that department.
All right, and pull out your spinners one more time. Spinners one more time over here as we continue and wrap up on our summary and next steps for HR. Now, you've heard all kinds of bodies of work being presented to you today. There's a lot going on, and it does not happen without the powerful wind behind the pinwheel of our team. Our HR team deserves and merits all of this stuff that you see here today is because of that team, right? So very quickly, we're focusing on regulatory compliance. So everything that we do is about board policy and following everything that gets approved by you all. So thank you for your support in all of these initiatives behind the scenes and in front of the scenes. And also for HR policy revisions and reviews. We want to stay current with what's happening. We've paired up with our legal team. We're also incorporating standard operating procedures, also known as SOPs, for each of the board policies so that we could refresh, refine, renew, all of the good stuff, right? And technical upgrades. You might know that our systems are somewhat dated sometimes, so we're going through that process. And shout out to our friends at IT that are helping us to beef up our equipment, right? And really helping us to automate a lot of our processes. And finally, we are really, really focused this year on proactive communication and engagement with our employees. We are looking for ways to get feedback, to reach out to schools, to principals, huge shout out to the regionals that help us with this work every single day. We cannot do it alone. It takes a collective lift. And with that, we turn it over to Superintendent Carlin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First of all, Dr. Johnston and team, wow. Just wow. When I think about all of the information that you've shared, things like retention is the new recruitment. I heard you, Ms. Rivera, and I couldn't agree more. Dr. Iarussi, just with the work that you've done with, as the chief negotiator for the school district in partnership with Talc and with Spalc, really appreciate the efforts there, successfully negotiating in partnership with our unions, collective bargaining agreements, salary adjustments, and lots of other benefits for our employees. So just appreciate your work there. Thank you to HR for recognizing the need for 300 new teachers, over 300 new teachers coming in the next several years with the building of new schools and for recognizing that we're going to need to hold on to our teachers we have, right? Setting that bar high at 95%, at least 95%, really appreciate that. And then the last thing, I could go on and on, but the last thing I want to talk about is Covey and the four disciplines of execution. So in speaking with Collier County, you know, several years ago, Collier County was a B school district, and we were an A school district. And then we did a switch. We became a B, they became an A. And we've had conversations, our team has had conversations with the superintendent and with other leadership team members there, what made the difference? And I would argue, leadership makes all the difference. But when we asked about professional development, they said Covey's 4DX. And you can see why. When you set those wildly important goals, and then you go after them, and you have a very simple way of tracking them, you have a better shot of achieving them. Think about when I was first sworn in, and Ms. Chaviano, Mr. Ribble joined us on this governance team. One of the things we started tracking immediately was the deficit in teacher vacancies, over 200 teacher vacancies a year ago. We got that number down to 17 by having a very simple goal of reducing to zero. Now, we didn't get to zero. And then we had another issue going into the school, you're 575 teachers with retirements, promotions, and with people just leaving the profession. We got that number down to 37, now it's down to 20. It's not zero. So I know I'm looking at Dr. Johnston, the team, they are so committed. They keep telling me, we're going to get it down to zero. But I want to give you some numbers. 20 teacher vacancies, four in the east region. I'm going to say that number again, out east. Four teacher vacancies, four in the north, five in the south, and six in the west, and one special center. I just want those numbers to just sit for a moment. It has been a very long time in the school district since those were the numbers. And the reason I point those out and underscore them is the commitment of this team, our principals, and our hiring managers in the schools. What a partnership. And guess who wins when that happens? Children. Children this year have a teacher. And that hasn't happened in many of our regions, including the east and the north, for many years. So just thank you for your commitment. Thank you for focusing on recruitment and, very importantly, on retention. And thank you for having a forward vision to address the needs as they present, to look forward at what is coming, and also to acknowledge that there's still work to be done. Succession planning, job satisfaction, culture, leadership development in this building with divisional leaders, with department leaders. We focus on the schools, and that is absolutely a great place to focus. We have to also remember our divisional and our department leaders, and thank you for acknowledging that that is work to come. So I'm very excited about the presentation. We look forward to your comments today. Thank you, board members.
Mr. Ribble.
Well, after that, I don't know what I can add, but I am going to, I am wound up here. The key word is wow. What a difference in the last 12 months. I mean, the way you folks have, like, the retention number at 97%, who would ever thought? And all these processes that you're measuring, the time it takes to execute, whether it's a benefit plan or a hiring plan or answering the phone when someone applies, that's just outstanding. And as in any business, the manager is really the key person. In our business, it's the principal. And I was really glad to hear the things you have in place to support, train, coach, and counsel our principals, especially in dealing with teachers with a contract. You know, we don't need to have the aggravation of not understanding an agreement, we have hard feelings, mistrust. So it sounds like we really have the team in place. And again, wow, I thank, high-energy group over there, the five of you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Chaviano.
Yeah, so thank you. I love when you guys present because you always bring treats. But no, I mean, thank you for everything that you guys do. I read the newsletters when they come out, and none of it really, like, sets for me, but I love all the information in there. So I'm hoping that everyone in the schools are really taking the time because it is, like, jacked full of information. Like, it's pages and pages of stuff. So, like, kudos to all the work that you guys are doing because it does show. And you guys are just so peppy and, like, happy and wonderful, and that's the way that they are. Like, that's the way that it should be, and it should be exciting and happy. So to that, like, yes, in the last year, it has been a 180 in this, you know, division of the business, and that's exciting. And excited to see what the next year brings and all the other things. And you guys won me over at KPI, so I'm just, I love that. So, thank you.
Mr. Persons.
Yeah, I'm very happy about the few vacancies in the east zone. Been tracking it for a long time. No matter what the number was, until this year, there were so many vacancies in the east zone as the other three zones combined. And that put a huge deficit there and a huge burden on those schools to produce. I do have one thing that we didn't talk about today that concerns me greatly. I mean, if our goal is to have a certified teacher in every classroom, we have 10% of the rooms substitute every day. I was looking at the numbers. I've been tracking it for a few weeks. Last week, we had, the lowest we had out was 529 teachers in one day. The most we had out was 737 teachers in one day, which is about 12%. That may be normal with sickness and things. I don't know. But I think we need to look at that. I mean, if our goal is 95% retention, it could be better if we had 95% of them actually in the class on any given day if possible. And I don't have an answer to that. I just want to put that on your radar screen to check into because I think it sort of feeds the purpose. Thank you.
Ms. Chivinelli.
Well, I just want to say thank you. You knocked it out of the park on this one. And I just wanted to say kudos to y'all, and I can't see, I can't wait to see what you do. I mean, you got a pinwheel this time, I think a bell, and I, so I'm going to start collecting the things from HR. So just thank you. And I'm excited, I'm excited about everything that you're bringing forward. And, there you go. Thanks, Arm. But just thank you. That's I just really want, and we see it, I can't wait to see the outcome because I believe it's going to really drive home. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
Well, I thought you were trying to hypnotize us with this, so I stopped looking at it. No, I really do appreciate everything that you said, but I do have a couple of questions, please, if you don't mind. The temporary teacher internship, what is the difference of, that's on page 15, what is the difference of the temporary teacher internships and the flyers? Because I think the flyers are students as well, correct? So who exactly are they, the temporary teachers?
Sure. Yes, so our temporary teacher certificate interns are candidates that are, in lieu of finishing their final internship, they actually go and become the teacher of record and take a classroom vacancy. So they're filling positions before they graduate.
So what's the difference of the, aren't the flyers the same?
The flyers are part-time, and they take, they have, they get a stipend. They don't make a salary like a teacher, the temporary teacher intern certificate teachers.
Okay.
Yep, so the flyers are still under the internship model.
Okay, that's why I was, like, a little bit confused because I saw multiple ones. And then the other one is Dr. Savage, and that was page 29. How many people are, how many responds do you get? You stated that you sent out, like, the pulse, and then you're hoping to get the response back from the teachers. Do we get, do you track how many people are actually responding to us or to you?
Yes, so we just sent out this past month, about a week ago, and we're in the 400s in response. But we're always encouraging increased participation, and we do use that data. We look at the data in real time to help guide our organizational efforts in response to the retention needs from the voice of our teachers. We also use the newsletter to celebrate our teachers. We do teacher shout-outs, special localized teacher discounts. So shout out if anyone knows of any of our local, you know, restaurants or businesses that would like to be featured and contribute, please let me know. Thank you.
And then is that also, is that just teachers or is it our kitchen staff or bus, I mean, because I know every time we speak, it's about teacher, teacher retention, but we also have to make sure that we have so many others that are involved in the whole process.
Absolutely, 100%. And our teachers can't do their jobs without the jobs of everyone else in our organization. For this first go-around, we're starting everything with the teacher model, so this is a teacher retention-specific model. However, we have a framework that we've built out to support this one employee group that we do hope to replicate in the future and have an expansion of, you know, of models to go to our different employee groups. So we want to prioritize our rollout based on data, so whatever our needs will be, would be our next group.
Okay, I have two quick more, two more. Summer camp, we, I think last year, we had to cancel that? The giant one that we normally have at the high school, we canceled it, and then did we have smaller ones?
Great question.
The new teachers.
Our new teacher training camp.
Is that the summer camp?
Yeah, so we generally, we usually have a very large-scale one in the summer. We did offer a shorter version of that to the same denominator of all new teachers, and we did have a very strong turnout for that. It was on pause because of the status of the grant funding, and then when we got it, we were able to still, we did it regardless. We did it during the preschool week. But we don't just do one because we don't just get teachers in the summer. So we're about to do our next one coming up soon. We have a winter camp and a spring camp as well. So as our teachers come through and we intake them, we get them taken care of and supported with that onboarding process.
Perfect, thank you. And then the last one is for Dr. Iarussi. When you do the, receiving the notification, how are they receiving the notification to submit all of their documentations of their credentials in order to get paid properly?
So we're talking about Schedule N and Spalc. So those hourly employees, particularly the Schedule N, which are the unbargained positions, and Spalc, so most of those are non-exempt positions. And so the pay grade then exists for each one of those different job classifications. And so we're transitioning from that market rate system to now an open-range system. So we do take into account, then, the years of credible, verifiable experience. And so that's what the whole process really entails for those hourly positions is going back through, collecting the information so that we can accurately place them within the pay grade. And so really, what we've done this year is we've tried to determine where they should be on the pay grade, and then what we're using is 50% of the way there. So hopefully, over a two-year period, we can get all of our employees to those targets within the next year. So that was the, you know, that's what was bargained through the Spalc negotiations and agreed upon, and so that same process now is being implemented for our Schedule N. Did I answer that question?
Well, specifically, it was, I know that some had reached out and were speaking about, like, the psychologists, how they did not get their paperwork in in time in order to get paid properly. And of course, I directed it into you. But I'm just curious on how do we send that from the district to all of the employees to make sure that we are, or do we already have their information?
Well, we sort of do. We do have some information on our employees, and when it comes to instructional staff, we refer to that as years X, and that's kind of the term that they use. So we determine, you know, when you get hired, there's always been throughout the years a limit on what our employees can bring in as far as experience. So it may have been seven years for teachers at one time. It was 10 years not too long ago. Now it's 20 years, so you can bring in 20 years' worth of experience. So we have kind of information on all of our teachers, and you can imagine, you know, we have 25-year teachers as opposed to five-year teachers, and trying to track what everybody had as verifiable years of experience. So we haven't quite got to that point yet, but that's been the conversation that we've been talking with Talc about, that's where we want to eventually end up, is really taking a look at our teachers and what skills and experience they bring to the table. And our special instructional staff is all of those counselors, LMHPs, all of those folks. And our contract has been the case where they really didn't bring in a lot of, they weren't permitted to bring in a lot of experience. So we're looking at, you know, some ways to solve that problem upcoming in the future. Again, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Chaviano, did you have something? No. Dr. Carlin.
My apologies, I forgot to mention two things. I just wanted to give some shout-outs to our board members. Ms. Chaviano for serving on the calendar committee. Congratulations to you and our team for the two-year instructional calendars. That's really fantastic. As a mom, having sent two boys to our school district, I would have absolutely loved that. So thank you to you and to the team for your work. And of course, to Mr. Ribble, who serves on our Insurance Task Force as the board's representative. Just really appreciate your business background and the contributions that you make to that Insurance Task Force. I heard some numbers batted around, reducing the deficit from $28 million to about a quarter of a million. That is a really big deal, and I did not want that to go unnoticed. So it's been a pleasure having both of you serve on these committees, and the board can be very proud of their representation, so thank you.
All right, the only thing I will add, if anybody, everyone is, okay, I want to come at this from a different perspective. But for somebody who once worked in this district, there were many reasons in HR that I left. And the environment and the culture that had unfortunately kind of unwound itself, but I would be happy to come today to work for Lee County School District, and I want to say thank you so much for the efforts put behind this because you're going to touch a lot of educators' lives in ways that you probably won't even realize because you are here and they're boots-on-the-ground in the classroom. But just by having an app, a culture and atmosphere that you are creating where a teacher feels like they can ask questions, they, and somebody will answer them and not degrade them for asking, is really kudos to what you all are building. And I just want to say And I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of all of teachers should, should feel really proud of what's happening down here at the district and as, and as well as you. And your positive energy, I just love it. I'm an energy kind of gal, so I love that you bring all of this to the table. And, and I think that it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to be catchy throughout the district and I can see an upswing already. So thank you so much. You're welcome. I'm going to go take my pinwheel and put it in my office next to my bell. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon. Next, we have the Student Advisory Focus Group presented by Dr. Nathan Shaker, Dr. Colleen Tim, and a member of our Student Advisory Focus Group. I know we have a special guest this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon Superintendent Carlin. And I would say good afternoon to Ms. Kathy Dupree-Burne, but I think she stepped out. We're happy to have a VIP guest here with us today. She's someone who I think has shaken many of your hands multiple times. But we're, we're here to share the, the next iteration, the next evolution of our Student Advisory Group. Dr. Colleen Tim, who many of you have met, is, is leading the charge in kind of the reinvention and the recreation of our Student Advisory Group. Nashini is our first leader who's going to be sharing today. So we're going to go through with you briefly the policy or the, the process and the system. And then Nashini's going to have some information to share with you today.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share student voice with you today. As Dr. Shaker said, we built on a successful model for collecting student voice and we've grown it into this opportunity to share with authentic audiences, one of whom is you. So thank you again. So we have a, a group of students who have signed up for each of our, our four topics this year. And Nashini will get into a little bit more of that in a minute. But our, our purpose was to invite middle school and high school students from across the district. We did those as virtual meetings so that transportation wasn't a barrier for students. And we put forth and are putting forth topics that we are working on as the district staff to invite student voice into that so that we can really work on creating a, a culture that is positive and does support next level readiness for each of our students. So high school students have the opportunity to facilitate those online meetings. And then they also have the opportunity to indicate their interest to be with us today. So our first group was a small group, small but mighty. Their, their voices were spectacular. And we did have Mr. Persons who, who joined us, so I'm sure he'll be able to attest to that as well. Nashini led that meeting for us and she's going to take you through slides and then I'll wrap it up and talk about next steps.
Hello. So our first topic during our first meeting was attendance. So, so during this meeting, we had middle school and high school students attend. And so we started out with a really positive note in that the chronic absenteeism is down from 29.2% last year to now 21%. And this is likely following COVID-19. People are starting to get back into the swing of things and come to school more often. And so some of the things that the students on, that attended the meeting discussed is that the students were able to attest to the fact that attendance was better. And some of the middle, middle school students talked about how their schools did celebrations such as stickers, popsicles, and the color-free shirt days. And then students are able to check in with each other and look forward to events like Hello Week. So we also discussed some challenges and barriers that students, students face when coming to attend schools. So the first one was the transportation issues and not being able to sign up like for the busing or missing busing and then not being able to come to school. And I can personally attest to this because like, for example, at my school, I have a peer who is able to come to my school because we have like a specialized technology program. And because of that, he's been able to take advantage of a lot of the different like certifications we offer. But imagine all the students that may not be able to do that, that would strongly benefit from being able to get to the schools and not have to worry about transportation. The second topic we discussed was the mental load and just being overwhelmed and technology, of course, staying up late on your phone and not being able to wake up in the morning. And then heavy homework causing people to just stay home just to get catch, to catch up because they feel really overwhelmed. And the final issue here is like parent understanding and parents not realizing how disruptive absentee, being absent can be for students. So some suggestions that we had for improvement was addressing the transportation gaps and making sure that students are signed up for the buses and the routes are consistent. And then teaching students tech use and homework. And also like another idea that we had was having some form of video that would show students like the consequences of not going to school and like 10 years down the line, what would that look like? And those could be done at different like age appropriate levels for like elementary, middle, and high school. And also making sure to like give these creative incentives that some schools are already doing.
So next? Next steps will be to share the findings with a group of teacher volunteers who are working with members of our department on improving the Wellness Wednesdays. So we have, we have heard clearly that people would like to see some improvement in that area. And building up what Nashini just shared, we think we can bring in some opportunities for some different videos and speaker opportunities. Certainly sharing this information with principals so they see already what students say is resonating with them as being effective strategies to encourage good attendance and also be aware of challenges. Sharing that information with transportation. I know they're working hard on transportation. I've seen some great improvements and sharing this information with them again on that. Mid-year, we will also undertake another attendance campaign. You saw that Paul Milford from our department worked with our communications team on that. Dr. Carlin was featured in that. And so we want to ramp that up again mid-year and encourage a nice, strong end to the school year. And then again, talking with our Student Advisory Group. Our fourth topic, as you would have seen on one of the earlier slides, is on technology usage. And we heard clearly from, from the students in the group that time management gets away with them when they get into their technology. So we do have a, a topic in the fourth quarter, talk about that. And that'll feed in with some of the work that's happening in the academics department about how much technology is too much. So lots of teams will get this information and be able to factor that into their work. So I thought that the students were great and forthright and, and wonderfully confident in sharing their voices and really pleased that Nashini could be here with us today to share with you.
At this time, we would turn it over to the superintendent's comments, any board discussions. And Nashini might be eager to answer, so we'll give her a chance.
All right, I love it. So thank you, Dr. Shaker and Dr. Tim, and of course Nashini. It's always a pleasure to get to see you. And now we got to talk with you a little bit last spring at one of the meetings and just really appreciate you stepping up into a leadership role again this year. So we look forward to your questions and comments from the board. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
I really enjoyed your meeting with the other students that night. It was fun to sort of team into it or zoom in. I can't remember which one we used that night. But it was really good. The one thing that I did notice is the one reason I had really good attendance wasn't mentioned. I did not go to school to learn anything. I went to school to see my friends. That was the main reason every day. And I imagine most of y'all did the same thing. I mean, we did not have the cell phones, the texts all night long and everything. When I tried to do that, my parents, you know, we had a, I think we were talking the other day, a party line type thing. So we couldn't use the phone like we did. So it was good. So I think we missed that a little bit. That was, that was the only thing. But I don't know how to get that culture back where they're actually looking forward to seeing each other. I'm hoping the lack of cell phones will help do that because they are talking to each other much more now than during the lunchtime. But that was just the one thing. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Kudos on this. As I said, I love, and we've talked about this before, the difference of having active engagement versus passive engagement. I love this. So Nashini, you're a rock star. We always appreciate seeing you. So did you feel, and I apologize when I was able to tend, I'm glad that Mr. Persons was able to, did you feel there was a good active engagement, a good discussion? Do you feel like the students felt like they were being heard, including yourself?
Yes, I would say so, especially having been on like the committee in the different formats that it was in the previous years, being able to have like this format where we have the discussion and then we're able to make the slideshow and encompass it to you all is really, it's nice for us to know that like we see the effects like of our discussion we have rather than assuming that it gets to the right people.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
It's always great to see Nashini. We've watched you grow up, I feel like, for eight years now. I just, this format, I, and I know that I, we've had this conversation. I really do believe that this is a great format. But Nashini, do you think that like after doing all of, and I, I apologize that I did not make that meeting, but do, do you feel that it's getting to the right people? You said, so I assume that's us. So how do you get that information back to your pair, you know, your peers and back into the schools to take what you have shared with us? How do you all get that back into the schools?
I think part of it would be based on like discussions that the district makes and then handing that down to teachers. I'm not sure if I fully understood the question though.
Well, how do you, okay, so how do you anticipate sharing what you've, the conversations that you've had and you shared it with us? So now we, we understand what you have done. Now how do you take that back to the students, back into your schools to share what your group has, has discussed? How do you share that back with them?
I think one great way is to have more students like attend these meetings. Like during this past one, we had four students, so myself and three middle school students representing three different middle schools. So it'd be great if we could have representation from a lot of different schools attending these meetings so that more people have, more students have like a say or can pitch their ideas that eventually get included in these presentations.
Okay, so now you go back to Dunbar, okay? Because you represented Dunbar. So you go back there and you share amongst the students there?
Yeah, I mean, like the way I can like kind of promote, like cause my friends to come to school is by being like a good peer. So I think those lessons are kind of just instilled. Like I can't just lecture my peers to come to school because that's not going to help them. So I think just the person I am and like the person students want to be. I think one thing we mentioned during the meeting is like to teach students to not be the reason that someone else doesn't want to come to school. So just like being a good person, I'd say.
Thank you.
Ms. Chiviano?
Well, one thank you for this. I know when it was shared originally, I said I was super excited about getting student feedback and to kind of hear what was going on and the thought. So the numbers underneath each of these quarters, like the six and 16, what does that represent?
The number of students who have signed up.
Signed up, okay. So for quarter two or quarter three, are we going to open it up? Maybe think like, hey, this is how many people sign up? This is how many people show up? Can we reopen it with the possibility of saying like four showed up for quarter one?
Yeah, we can definitely do another call for people to do it. I knew I would do it for the quarter four one because we had added that one late.
Right.
So that six is just represented from the kids who have signed up for the first three. So we'll take that one back publicly and we'll do reminder so we easily could open that up again.
And then two, I think for the, the subjects, I think the attendance piece, I think the feedback is great and kind of here. The technology piece and the staying up late, I have elementary, middle school, so I can attest that I, I see that. Looking forward to code of conduct and all the different pieces, especially with technology. There was a mention of like cell phones and kind of seeing what that looks like. And it's off-subject, but since you're here and you're a student in our schools, kind of curious your experience so far this year with the cell phone policy and kind of what we've rolled down and how it's been in school.
I really like not, not having phones. I've noticed like personally in my school, there's been like a lot less fights because I, I don't know if it's a direct result of the cell phone policy, but I would say maybe because sometimes when there's fights, people want to have their phones on them to like record it. And so by not having phones, I think there's that less incentive to have fights. And that's just something I've observed in my school. But I mean, like the people that are going to sneak their phones to like to the bathroom or stuff, they're going to do that anyways. But I think for the general population of like the people that follow the rules, I think it's really benefiting us.
That's awesome. Thank you for that. Well, no, I'm excited. And thank you for participating and looking forward to the rest of the feedback for the year. So thank you for doing it. Thank you.
Ms. Chivinelli?
Yeah. So just thank you. Thank you for participating. Thank you for keeping this going because I was a little worried about it, honestly. So I'm excited to see the increased student.
Participation.
Participation, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate, thank you so much for being a part of it. And I just, you know, it, I have, I have young kids too. And there's nothing more frustrating than giving your ideas and then nothing ever comes of it. Or sharing your opinion and your thoughts and you're like, are adults even listening? So I look forward to these open communications and I would encourage you to continue to stay engaged in your school. And hopefully more students will see that this is benefiting you all. I mean, you're an advocate for your peers. And I think this is going to lead into some great things. I already know that you're going to be a great leader and do great things in life. But this is just one more little feather in your cap to add to your resume to the, to the next step. So thank you so much for being here. All right, thank you. Have a great afternoon. Next, we have a discussion with fraud, waste, and abuse presented by Dr. Ken Savage and Dr. Shannon Johnston.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Carlin and Attorney Dupree-Burne. A full pleasure to be up here with you today. Dr. Johnston and myself, we're here to basically close a loop with an earlier board ask from the October meeting and prior where we discussed the potential for a pilot with the Clerk of Court's office. I know that each board member had an opportunity to also ask questions directly of the Clerk of Courts in the last superintendent one-on-one. So what we wanted to do today was just bring a couple artifacts forward to you just to demonstrate how we are procedurally through the administration side approaching this potential pilot that we are looking at with the Clerk of Court's office. Essentially, we have two attachments in the board agenda item. You have printed those items with you as well. The first one just is a very quick visual overview of the, of the flow chart for the waste, fraud, and abuse. And it kind of outlines how this would essentially perform related to the rest of similar types of things like this that we have where a complaint essentially is received. The Clerk of Court's office has a hotline, a form that where they receive them. They receive it presently on behalf of all the different county agencies. So for example, Board of County Commissioners, the Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller, as well as the Port Authority. And so we would just be added to that piece and received in the exact same format that they do. Then once that is done, if they believe that it falls within the scope of that, then we would receive a notification. And then they perform just like all the other third-party entities that perform investigations with us. They are independent. That includes things such as RSM for us as our board auditor. They do independent work even in our Office of Legal Services. If we have our government compliance, they do an independent, they're not, you know, we're not directing in any way, whether it's our professional standards. We don't direct that they have to do particular things, whether it's the Auditor General through the state of Florida or any of the other entities. This would be organized very much in the same way. Once they are completed with that report, of course, we have to cooperate depending on the nature of what it is. That's part of how we as the administration go is that we cooperate by providing access to whatever things are needed to do that. Once they are done, they issue a report and that goes to the administration as well as the board. Because the administration role in that is that we have to get it and then actually have to compile what we do about it. But the board gets it from your compliance oversight role. You are, have to be made aware of that. But the superintendent acting in a day-to-day operational capacity has to figure out how But, the superintendent acting in a day-to-day operational capacity has to figure out how do we respond to that? And then, the board determines whether or not that is an acceptable response, and of course, that's completely between your relationship with the superintendent and how you do it. So, that, that visual one pager kind of outlines that piece. The second attachment that we have is actually the individual process document, which gives a little bit more of a detailed breakdown specifically of what that looks like in the organization. So, you understand how both from the complaint being received, what that notice, the written notice that goes to the school board, as well as what happens for the complaints that don't fall within scope and so forth. So, all those things are provided today. I know some of you had questions of the Clerk of Courts directly, but really, this was just to kick off your board discussion today at the workshop so that you could ask any additional questions you may have, have any discussion you might have, and that we are stand ready to provide information as well as support any discussion you have related to this pilot program that we are interested in implementing. That's it, Madam Chair.
Dr. Carlin, do you have anything first? Okay, Mr. Ribble.
Yeah, I took a, I took a gander at this just now, take a look at the processes. This is almost exactly the same thing that UPS and Delta Airlines did back around 1992 when we were put in a compliance line. And the thought was, we had all these lawsuits coming, every, nobody was going through the process agreements. They weren't start, they weren't talking to their immediate manager or the person they reported to. They wanted to go right to the top, right to the attorneys, and all billable hours were out, out of the roof. So, then it became, okay, how do we do this? How are our employees going to trust us to call the company and complain? We don't think so. So, we went to a third-party vendor, and then we shared a lot of the same business practices with Delta, as you know. Both corporate offices are in Atlanta, and that's what we did. We went to a third-party outside vendor, and the morale of the people, the trust of the whole process went way up, and guess what? Billable hours came way down. So, I applaud the efforts of doing this, and I'm glad to see that we can partner with the county to get this done.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Ms. Jordan.
I'm going to be the negative one, of course. I asked earlier, I know we're supposed to have the information seven days before, which of course, this did not come to us seven days before. Just now seeing this, to even look this over at this moment. So, that to me is concerning that we would present something for us to have a conversation when we haven't even had the opportunity to read this. So, I'm not sure what happened there. And I specifically did send an email earlier to find out where, there was nothing attached to this. So, now we have this information, we're having a conversation about something that we have, I mean, I know, I have not had an opportunity, I don't know if anybody else has had an opportunity to read this yet. So, I, I have a problem with that. And not only that, when we did have our one-on-one, we had a conversation, and even the last time we had a conversation, it was we wanted to make sure that we had some type of agreement, an MOU or something on this so that if we wanted to back out, we could do that. And I'm not really sure why it's so imperative that the Clerk of Courts gets involved in the Lee County School District. So, there's multiple things, and again, this all, I believe, is in the contract of the, our, of our attorney, if I remember correctly. Mr. DePree Burnham would know that. But, so, yeah, I am compelled to, I have, I have an issue with this.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. I was able to review this yesterday in board docs when I got the notification, my email about it, so. And I'd also previously asked the superintendent, the Clerk of Courts, and the deputy superintendent in regards to this. I support this just as I did last time. And Lee County, these last few years, has been a leader throughout this state, and I think this is a thing where we continue, especially where we're seeing, you know, DOGE and really looking into school districts and municipalities. I think, again, we need to be a leader, and as I said, the clerk already does this for the county. It doesn't cost us any additional dollars. And again, it's a pilot project, so I don't see why we need some kind of long-winded agreement. And this, I believe this falls in the power of the superintendent. I've been through, with many of you, with, you know, three different superintendents, and when there's anything I believe that has encroached upon that, I've spoke up. In this case, I don't see it, so, thank you.
Ms. Chievenelli.
I would like to see a little more contract. This is the process document, and I'm good with that, except that I have several questions that I'm just reading. But, oversight is the board, not the superintendent, so I, I don't really understand what you're talking about when you said this is the superintendent's. But, oversight, this is oversight, and that's us.
I can, I can help, I think.
Just.
I'm happy to try to add some clarification, both to some of the earlier member comments as well as to Ms. Chievenelli's. So, I think under this, under this idea, you know, really, the, the goal here was to kind of outline, not for any kind of vote or anything along those lines, but really just to outline administratively how we would be processing as we work with just yet another one of these members. Not to take the place of the Lighthouse office or encroach on any of the other areas where constituents can make complaints or employees can make complaints, but really to offer an additional channel above and beyond what's done at no additional expense on behalf of the organization so that the Clerk, or the Clerk of Courts office could, could function in that capacity. What we're doing through piloting this work, the intention behind that is strictly to see how that goes. Is that something that is helpful to the folks who, who would wish to avail themselves of that anonymous or non-anonymous reporting that they do and to see if this is a value add or not? And I think the Clerk of Courts outlined that pretty well in our one-ones as well. As it pertains to oversight, just to kind of clarify, really, all of you are responsible for the oversight of the district. So, the board members, obviously, being members of the board, the school board is ultimately the authority for the school district. However, the superintendent is the, is the secretary for the board. And so, on, in the day-to-day function, when the board is not in session meeting, it is a superintendent who, who, as general authority, as prescribed by statute, to be responsible for the general oversight of the entire school district every single day, 24/7, not just in meetings and not just, that's, that's an individual charge that her role carries with it in addition to. So, it isn't just, I, so I want to make sure it's really clear. The oversight is a shared collective responsibility that the entire school board and superintendent both have, and that is specified in statute. Sure, the school board attorney could read this, this, under the powers of the stat, the powers of the superintendent and the school board authority for oversight is listed as one of the chief responsibilities. As it pertains to these specific documents, these were designed strictly to help demonstrate to the board how we would be interfacing with them. Again, that's just really to guide our work and to demonstrate also how similar it is for all of the other entities that we engage with when we go through these types of things. Furthermore, this was done after we had the board member one-on-ones taking feedback from the board members. In the most recent one-to-one, that's when these were produced to be responsive to those board member asks. So, that's, remember, Jordan, why that happened after the fact, because the board members wanted that type of clarity. The reason why we moved away from the idea of a, of a formal contract or something in that nature is because we're still really in this pilot phase where we are attempting to gather and see, is this something that folks use? Would they use it? What does that total amount of intake look like? How does it perform related to that aspect? How easy is it to coordinate with this additional group? Does it result in, in a, in a value add for the organization? And that's something the clerk articulated as well, both, both in our one-on-ones as well as in the prior, the prior exchange. So, that said, I hope that answers the questions that you had, at least from, from our vantage point.
Thank you. So, I still have more. So, then, so in some of this, I'd like to see a couple other, I love the, the check, the, the third page where the, the kind of outcome and, you know, what you, what they do with it a little bit, and it gives us direction and guidance. And I like the process document. I just, what happens, and so when the step one, what if it's, you know, a personnel matter? Like, you could have one complaint that could touch three different departments. So, how, I don't see that, how that would be addressed. And then, my third, on the step three, back to the reporting the findings, I would like to see that it goes to RSM slash board auditor. I'm hoping we have a board auditor by then, and then that would be the in-house board auditor, and then board attorney. Because I, I think that I would want to ask questions, and that's who I'm going to probably ask, especially in legalities that maybe I, I would need to know or may not need to know, and that would, that would have, you know, have that. So, how does that work?
I can take the first part of that. So, the, if we were, if the clerk's office was to get a, a personnel complaint that wasn't like, you know, very serious or, you know, something, you know, silly, for lack of words, those would come to the superintendent's designee to then disperse to the appropriate, or the superintendent or the designee to come to the appropriate department to handle, whether that be a school principal or a department manager or to professional standards. And then, they would just investigate waste, fraud, and abuse cases. So, that's, it's part one C. It kind of spells that out there.
Okay. So, how do we know who the designee would be, then?
Yeah, I'm happy to respond again. So, the, the cases of the things that would come to the board for review would be the, the cases that were deemed to be within scope and where they have an actual, where they're going to be looking into, or were given notice essentially when they believe they've found an issue that warrants investigation, as well as once they've completed that investigation. Everything that does not fall within scope essentially is rejected, redirected to us, so, and we get them every day. They come in the form of emails, phone calls. You all receive them in your inboxes as well, and so I'm sure people you meet in the grocery store. It happens all the time, and it's a huge part of what we do in running the day-to-day operations is we receive complaints of all natures, both labor as well as constituents for all manner of things. What, what this is really about is, is it within the scope of what he can look at or not? And if it is not within that scope, it is redirected essentially. They, it's a closed loop from them. If they believe that it is and it validates that initial communication essentially saying they believe it falls within scope, obviously, for us, that, that's a pretty critical moment just in turn because it, it commences a body of work of review, just like many others, investigations based on their different scopes. And then, when it's completed, we have the opportunity to review the work after, of course, with all the cooperation we have to go through for them to be able to complete that process. So, it's, it's not designed to take the place of anything else. We have tip lines, we have Fortify Florida, we have all the means of communication that folks can, can avail themselves of, all those things. Nothing precludes anyone from going through those different methods as well. I hope that answers.
It does, and it follows pretty much the same process that we use for all those other, you know, hotlines that we have. We follow the same process. So, they're, they're also dispersed out. Some have to be investigated and some are dispersed out to the appropriate people to handle.
And, excuse me, because I'm, I'm still, I still have old wounds, I'll say. So, I just, because I'm, I'm concerned, because I've been here when there was ongoing cases that the board attorney didn't know. And so, how do we avoid that if they're not in part of the process of it when it gets kicked back here, if it goes to a designee? How do I know that it's going to get in the right hands?
I think that's a great question, and just, I would say, and I think, you know, I lived some of that journey with you as well.
Yes.
So, I think one of the things that, that we, we've tried to commit to is this idea of one vision, one team. We aren't separate bodies of work here. We are one vision, one district. That means one governance team. That's where it starts and begins. The time period you referred to, I remember you weren't even meeting, you weren't allowed to meet with the superintendent.
Correct.
So, again, that, that demonstrates a dysfunctional governance approach where the superintendent and their governing board aren't even meeting and briefing information. And in this, in this organization, our intention is that we all work as one vision, one team with, with, even though you're all duly elected by the voters, the fact is you all have different roles and responsibilities, and every member of the governance team, including our board attorney, we all support the mission of this district, which is to do our work the proper way. And so, part of the superintendent's obligation is to make sure you have the information you need as well as because her responsibility to run the 24/7 day-to-day operation is a very significant burden as well, but yours as a governance team is also quite important as well. And so, that's part of what we attempted to do by showing the procedures here, is that level of transparency of what we're doing, even though only pieces of it land with the board, you're still ultimately responsible for all of it, as she is, Dr. Carlin. And so, what we want to make do is be very transparent about that with you all.
Ms. Chievenelli, I'm going to go to Ms. Chaviano, and then I can come back to you if you have another question.
Okay. I'd like to hear what others have to say.
Ms. Chaviano.
Yeah, so, to that point, I read part of it, and I had a conversation on our one-on-one and kind of walked through it as well. So, my understanding and kind of my, I'm going to break this up the best that I can. So, waste, fraud, abuse, just like Fortify, just like Lighthouse, all of that, that information comes in, we're notified after the fact. A lot of the pieces that come in, even when we get communication, 90% of the time, it's administrative. And I find myself saying, thank you for this. I'm going to send this to the superintendent's office, and they're going to direct someone that's going to handle that on your staff, which pains me because I can't do anything. It's out of my realm. So, with this, in that same light, right, much like Lighthouse, much like Fortify and everything else, this is out of that realm because these are waste, fraud, and abuse at the schools, with our staff, at the district office. These are people that are outside of our piece. We find out when something comes up. There is a case that gets involved and we're notified, we get our text message, we get our email notification. I feel like it falls within that same bucket. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And again, it's another layer of opportunity, and in the same way that I asked, we may not even get a tip in this avenue, which is why, to that point, an MOU hasn't been done because it's not something that the clerk does with any other entity that they provide this service for, which was the other ask. Because my question was, is yes, we're going to put this out to our district and our personnel to say, here's another channel where you can report something anonymously or non-anonymously, and they, it may not get a tip, or may get one, or may get three. What does good look like? What does effective look like? Does it mean if we get one, we have no waste, fraud, and abuse? I don't know, right? So, we don't know what that is until it's launched. And again, that's what the pilot is for, to then say, hey, in six months, we get two calls, does that mean we're really good? Or does it mean we need to do a better job advertising this channel? Or do we need to look at our other channels and say, what else came in along these lines, right? It's, it's another method to review the data. So, me personally, I, I mean, I support it. I don't see what's wrong utilizing a free source that's already out there to manage all the other information and things that come into this district because this is a very large district, as I'm learning, with so many things that happen every single day because we employ people and we work with people every day, and things happen. So, to have this system in place makes sense because we don't see Lighthouse when they come in. That's not something we get notified of every day unless something happens. And I, what do you want to know what that looks like, to be quite honest, every single day on our side? So, I'm going to trust the process and trust the clerk's office and what they do every day as they're elected and to do their job and what they do for the other entities in our district. So, I mean, I support it. I don't have any questions. I think I asked all my questions in terms of how this is going to get communicated and what the success, the success of this looks like. We won't know until it's ruled out and we get the data from it. So, I'm good on my end.
Thank you. Mr. Ribble.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back over. This isn't for somebody that stole a box of paper clips. This setup is for the real, serious, serious, somebody, somebody takes a vehicle home and they go on vacation for a week that the school district owns. That's fraud. That's abuse. Somebody has, has their garage doors redone on their home with, with new, the three-car garage, and they get three new motors, and they, they bill it to the, the school district. That's what this is for. For employees or, employees or people that work for the district that have an avenue to go to someone besides the district that they trust, that they can confide in and report the severe situations. That's what it's for. It's not for somebody, well, I, I don't like the way my principal looked at me because I didn't have the chalkboard erased in the beginning of class or some nonsense like that. This is for the heavy drama cases, and that's why I think our, our counties, who deals with this stuff all the time, is perfect, a perfect marriage for us to at least give it a try. It doesn't cost us anything. I got to tell you, when you have a big corporation and use a, you buy a third-party vendor to monitor this, you're spending millions of dollars in having them process these cases just to fill out the complaint and send it to you. You're getting a big bill here. We're getting this pro bono. So, it's, it's giving us sleeves out of our vest. It's a no-brainer.
Mr. Parsons.
Sure, sure, a realist. This is either going to work well or it's not. If you have an MOU, it's a pain to get rid of. If you have an MOU, it's a pain to get rid of. We're finding that out in another situation. Where if we have a pilot program, I think it, unless the attorney tells me I'm wrong, I think we could vote at any time to end it ASAP. Because there's no parameters that we're stuck to. So I think we just have to monitor it and see if it does work well, or if it doesn't work well. So again, for the reasons some of us said is free and this and that, I say, give it a chance. But I think we need to be vigilant, because of the things in the past, like Ms. Giavanelle is pointing out, and like Ms. Jordan's very aware of also. I think we just have to see where it goes. And that's sort of where I am. I'm going to be looking at it, but I'm not against trying it out at this time. And I think we'll know quite quickly. If someone tries to go way further than what we, we as a board, think they should be doing, trying to get into maybe minute things and everything like that, then we just vote to end it.
Ms. Jordan?
Do we vote to end it? Because if it's not us, the board, doing this, it's up to the superintendent, it's under her. If she's deciding to do this, then the superintendent, whoever that may be, how does the board vote to? Dr. Savage?
Yeah, I think I can help with that, because really, when four or more of you direct the superintendent, she's the secretary of the board, so you give direction to the superintendent, she makes recommendations every single time you have an action meeting. While this isn't a contract to be ratified, an agreement to be verified in that piece, as I thought Mr. Persson eloquently stated, you give direction every single time you come together as a governing body, and you give it to your superintendent in the form of, "We have a concern with this relationship that we have," or, "We do not," or, "We love this, we'd like to expand this." When you give direction like that, and four or more of you come to that type of direction, then as long as it's not illegal, the superintendent carries your wishes forward. That's her job. That's her role to do it. And it doesn't have to be in the form of a contract to make it something that can direct your work.
Ms. Jordan?
However, so we gave that direction, I believe there was four of us who gave that direction, that we would like to look at. If we were going to do this, we would want something in writing. Now today, we're here today, and now everything has changed. But at the last time we spoke on this, I believe there were four who had spoke about that we wanted to see something in writing. Okay? And then, and then even reading this, I went back and looked at my emails. I emailed yesterday at 2:02 to find out where the information was for this, so that's 2:00. Of course, you got life. Did I see this last night? No, I did not. So again, this is the first time I'm seeing this. And our audit, RSM is our auditors. They very, and I've had multiple conversations with them to clarify, "Do you do this? Do you do waste, fraud, and abuse?" They said, "Yes, they do." Okay? So that's our auders, so we're going kind of like against our auders. We have an audit committee. Hasn't even been brought up to our audit committee. And what did our audit committee, that's Ms. Giavanelle, what did our audit committee say on this? Did they say that that's a good idea, bad idea, should we try it? And what is the pilot program? What's the date on that? How long is that? A year, two years?
Happy to answer that question as well. We did, it was, we actually scheduled an audit committee meeting with the audit committee specifically, so they would have time to provide feedback to you prior to this meeting. And that's, just to kind of, again, answer your other question, that we did hear board member discussion. That's also why we just discussed that we would bring it to your one-on-ones, get more expansive insight into that. We did bring you written documentation as well today to demonstrate that it's still procedural, we're not, you know, this is obviously not an MOU, but it is detailing exactly how it performs. We did go through that, but the audit committee as well weighed in in the most recent audit committee meeting, and they were also supportive. They actually did Robert's rules, they took a formal vote and did vote to bring that recommendation forward, that this is something that, I think one of the comments that was listed was, "It's a no-brainer. It's free of charge and a great way to do it." So, Members Giavanelle, I believe you were at the meeting, if you'd want to share, kind of from a board member liaison perspective.
My apologies for not mentioning it earlier. I got too involved with the papers I just saw. They did support it. And they feel like that's a second set of eyes and opportunity. And they were briefed on the Lighthouse process that we have presently in place. And it's not to take away from that either. But I also want my concern, and going back to history, when the Clerk of Court was Linda Doggett, this is why I'm concerned regarding something in writing, and it maybe shouldn't be, and that, this would be, as Mr. Persson's mentioned, asking the attorney if we shouldn't have one, it would be easier to get out of. But when Linda Doggett came here and we were trying to decide on RSM or clerk, she seemed that she, she was adamant that she would have to hire staff, additional staff to accommodate and do this. So then that made me think, what happens if we are doing this and we love it, and then the clerk said, "Wow, we're really busy, we need to hire somebody, now we need to, y'all are going to have to help pay." You know, we split right now the SRO salaries with the sheriff. I don't want to be caught off guard and then decide that we now have got to pay for our auditing with them. And we already have an audit process that does fraud, waste, and abuse, RSM, I think. And then we're still trying to get an auditor that we're having difficulty doing. So I mean, there's just, I have a little more questions, or a lot more questions, that I would like, like, this is what happens when this happens. This is what happens when this happens. And I guess that's, if that makes sense, I don't know, I'm sorry, but I'm rambling. But I just, I, there's lots of questions that come through my mind, and that's, those are, that's what I'm having problems with right now. That's the only reason why, is just, and it is last minute for us. Thank you.
Attorney DuPuy Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just going back to Mr. Persson's comment, as counsel, I do have an obligation just to make sure that the board is aware of this. Yes, the board can direct the superintendent to move forward with the program, and if the board decides, "I don't want that program anymore," then the board can direct the superintendent to stop the program. So that's very clear. But I do want to make sure that the board is clear about one thing, in all due respect to the Clerk of Court. He has indicated that he has inherent authority to come into the school district, and constitutionally, he does not, because the school district is a political subdivision under Article 9. The tax collector, the sheriff, the county appraiser, all of those are county agencies, and we are not a county agency. So I do have to make sure, advise the board, that if, at some point, the board says, "I do not want the clerk to be here anymore," there may be an issue, because you've allowed the clerk to come in without parameters.
Oh, okay, Dr. Carlin?
Yes, I appreciate the counsel by our general counsel. Couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, I want to go back to something Mr. Persson said, and that is, this is a pilot. This is a pilot. The other thing I'd like to share is, our general counsel, our board attorney, myself, and Ms. Giavanelle were on the meeting with the audit committee. And one point was brought up that I don't think we've mentioned, and that is, that if I'm an employee or I'm a constituent, I can have the opportunity to go outside the district to report something. And if we want to talk about public trust, that is important. We have employees that will not report information, because Lighthouse does go to your employee, and it's not meant as an affront at all to your employee at all. It is the perception that the complaint is going to somebody inside the school board and inside the district. I do not feel comfortable reporting that. So I just wanted to just reemphasize something that the audit committee had brought out. Again, no-cost item, going outside the district helps build public trust, very supportive, this is a smart idea. Independence is important. Multiple ways to report fraud, waste, or abuse are important. And I also want to give you my assurance, you know, coming up on a year, working with all of you. As a superintendent, nothing is more important to me than making sure this district is run in the appropriate way. Nothing is more important to me than making sure that our employees and our constituents who elected all of us to office have a mechanism that they feel comfortable with reporting, because if we don't know about problems, we can't go to work on them. And again, this is not meant as any disrespect to anybody within our district or our board. There are constituents and employees that do not feel comfortable with the current system as is, and they will not report. This is one additional avenue for this reporting to be made to an independent party. And I'll be quite clear on this. My conversations with the clerk have gone like this. This is a pilot. I will be watching this carefully as well, as well as our board. I am not going to allow nonsense. Those of you that know me well, understand that. It is my duty, along with yours, to make sure that this district is run in an appropriate manner. And I take that responsibility and the oath I took a year ago extremely seriously. So I do want to assure you from my heart that this is a pilot, that we are giving our employees one more avenue, and our constituents one more avenue, who may not be comfortable with our current procedure. It's one more avenue, that's all it is. As to the process, the process follows exactly what we do when other external investigators are involved. We're noticed as governance team that there is a potential issue, the investigation occurs, we are reported back to on the outcome of the investigation. If there is employee discipline to be meted out, that comes from me. If it includes suspension without pay, termination, we follow the board policy, we bring it to you. This is absolutely in alignment with our other external investigations. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, through the chair to Member Giavanelle, you had mentioned about, obviously, volume and stuff like that, but that's why the pilot project's here. Let's see where we end up with that point. If that is an issue, then we can figure out later. That's what the pilot project and the data will be for. In regards to RSM, I appreciate the job they do. I don't see this any different than diversifying what we do with our legal services, where we use multiple attorneys from outside the district. In regards to RSM doing it versus us, you know, this is a, the clerk is a trusted government and agency, this is not some fly-by-night thing. And I don't know about you, I'd rather not waste any more taxpayer dollars if we have somebody that can do it that's already been paid for from that instance. I'm here to support anything that will help bring about, or bring forward anything that's fraud, waste, and abuse. Thank you.
Ms. Giavanelle?
I'll be quick to. Thank you both, because I do appreciate and agree with you. My only concern is, we're not here forever. You and I are not going to be here forever, and neither is that clerk of court. So what happens when things change? And that is my concern. Then, because Linda Doggett said one thing, now we've got Kevin Carnes that says another. And I respect and appreciate him for that, and I'm, like I said, I'm not against it. I just am worried about the parameters or the lack of, or like, I want to be able to, if for some reason we don't like something, we need to be able to be, you know, have that information. I'm just a little concerned, because we've had, we've had lots of investigations that didn't, we didn't know anything about that has happened. And I'm afraid that could be that, another situation for that. And I'm just, that causes me to pause. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give my thoughts, since there's been so many that are repeated up here. First of all, I, I'd like to say thank you to Kevin Carnes for taking this on and to support the school district of Lee County. He is offering this and his staff as free of charge. Mr. Rivel, your opening comments about this topic were spot on. Corporate America does something very similar to this. We run a seriously large corporation, and one of the, you know, one of the largest school districts of the state of Florida. We need to walk into that with a corporate mindset whenever we are running the business and the day-to-day business of the district. As a former employee here in Lee County, and in another district, Dr. Carlin, you're spot on. We can sing to the ceiling and put out these cute pinwheels in every classroom, and bells and candy, but I am, I promise you, there are, there are staff members that no matter how welcoming we make them feel in feedback, they are not going to, they are not going to file anything when they know in their minds that it could end up on our desk. And to be able to have another opportunity for someone to voice their concerns, I just don't see anything wrong with having more transparency. I mean, we, that's one of the number-one emails or complaints we get is about transparency, and we're trying to block this from every perspective. It's a pilot program. We have the authority as a board now, four years from now, a new superintendent from now, to say, "I'd like to make a motion to stop the pilot with the Clerk of Courts at any time." And if you can get four people on board with you, then that pilot program can stop. I, I just think that, I mean, we also have a committee. We've also talked about our committees, that, our advisory committees, and we have an audit committee that takes their volunteer time to form, and they're giving us their suggestion. And their suggestion is to please begin this pilot program. So are we not listening to our committee suggestions either anymore? And those are, those are just some of the things I've written down. I am incredibly excited about something like this, because I think it is an opportunity for us to see, to just shed some light on some things that we may not be privy to right now, because people just don't feel safe enough. And I think that the district is headed in a really positive direction with that, but we're not there. And I don't know that in a corporation this size, you'll ever fully be there. So I just want to, those are my thoughts. You have my complete support in this pilot with the Clerk of Courts, and I want to say thank you again to Kevin Carnes and the staff. Anything else? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to public, to public comment. Attorney DuPuy Bruno, do you want to address public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. There is nobody who has signed up for public comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to go to the order of other business, and I'll start with Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to make this quick. Horizon Counsel is going off committees. We did not have a meeting this month. Many of us attended the industry appreciation wars, which we saw some, obviously, great local community impact. Obviously, some of what's happened in the school district was highlighted, so that was really important and good to see. You know, we're the number-two economic driver in this county, so I'm glad to see that's recognized and we're supported for that. Foundation, we had a foundation meeting Dr. Carlin and I did last week. They had an update on Golden Apple nominations. They received 4,390 nominations, so that's fantastic. So looking forward to that. Also, if you haven't received yet, the foundation's sent out their calendar events, and, you know, continues to ask the board and everyone else to attend those events. We all know they're awesome, so. Drug Free Coalition last month, just again, and Ms. Langford-Fleming talked about this. If you have an opportunity to get out when it happens in Wintertime Drug House Odyssey, that's always a great thing to see, and to see the different interaction from the schools with all the scenarios there. It's always a fantastic thing. Last thing, I attended along with Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persson's FSBA Board of Directors meeting. I did send you kind of a complication of notes of things that happened there. You will see some different things in regards to a strategic plan that will come forward during December meeting. So that's all I have now. Thank you.
I attended the Do the Right Thing Award ceremony, and that's always fun, and I think it's your turn next. So I just would give you a little heads up on that. I attended the Edison Parks Book Fair. That was actually fun, a couple days of that. My daughter worked it for two weeks, and she had a sabbatical for her work, and she wanted to really shout out to everyone that works and does things at schools, because she was ready to go back to work come November 1st, just for the record, because she spent two weeks at Edison Park, and that was, you know, all day long. That's a lot. It was, it was a lot. She was, it was very enlightening for her. Most of us, I think, attended the Appreciation Industry Awards. That was actually fun, and to see how well our community is really partnering with each other and doing, you know, just bringing jobs and so forth to our community, because good jobs are a great opportunity for our community. Culinary Showcase Taco, we, at the Shangri-La, Taco Cook-Off was actually very fun. I ate, I will say, ate tacos that night, just for the record, and they were all really good, except for kind of, I'm not, wasn't into the actual... good, except for kind, I'm not, wasn't into the actual, the one with no meat that Bill and his wife love. I like, I like my chicken. But the Florida Restaurant Lodging Association is really good about partnering with us, and they do several other events throughout the year, so I encourage, the next time there's the Taco Cook-Off, go to it. And then the United Way Annual Campaign Kickoff, that's a very interesting event of all the community members and the people that participate. But I think the key is for us is that, what a partner that the United Way is for our, the school district, and what they do for us is far more than, I think, what we do for them. So I think that's really important to acknowledge them. I also wanted to bring up the two-year, yeah, the two-year calendar that we were approving. I thought it was exciting, because we're actually, I want to give kudos to whoever's on the Calendar Committee, where it's pretty much done Memorial Day weekend. Like, I know my daughter is going to be ecstatic and her friends with, they're not having to go back to school technically, and, you know, until August, and they'll have really a full two months of being off. So kudos to the Calendar Committee, because this is amazing, and they did it two years in a row. I was able to, she's, they're planning their vacations already, so, and their time off. So I think that's really great and exciting. So I just wanted to bring that up, and really, that's all I have, and just, I think the conversation's really good that we've had today. I am, for the record, I was not against anything, more transparency, more opportunity for audits and so forth. I was, I'm very much for it. I just want to make sure that, it's always devil in the details, and I'm concerned that the details are gonna have a loophole. But I think that, I'm confident that the Superintendent or one of us can bring that to her, and that'll get corrected and fixed at the time, because I just know it's not going to be perfect. So I look forward to our first audit with Kevin Carnes. Thank you.
Mr. Ribble?
Well, the first audit's right around the corner, because I'm gonna call him, implying that you ate too many tacos. You weren't supposed to eat, that's abuse. You weren't supposed to have eight, you were supposed to have four.
It was, I had to vote.
Okay. All right, I'm not gonna filibuster with all the things I did, but I do want to mention this, this taco situation was the best outstanding event I've been to in the district yet. It was so well-done. You could go to any one of these schools that had their stand, there were eight or 12 students there cooking, their mannerisms were so professional, they all were dressed neatly, they talked fluently, they were excited, and we are lucky to have those chefs, I'll tell you. And I want to give you a compliment for the calendar. I can't believe that calendar. That's the best calendar I've ever seen. But in closing, I do want to talk about the Insurance Task Force that I'm on. We just had a wonderful negotiations. I've heard a lot of stories, but the facts be known, I think, without a doubt, Dr. Rusi, Dr. Johnson just have done a great job working with the union here. Kevin Daly was fantastic. We talked about being in the hole $28 million. We had a handshake after three short meetings, and now we're in the hole $280,000. So I don't know how you do that, but we did a heck of a job. I'm not gonna tell you all the cuts we made, but believe me, if we can still get this monthly expense under the $2 million additional that we're spending every month over last year, that's $24 million a year if we keep trending the way we're going with benefits. So we all need to take a look at the benefits, make sure they're not being abused, and continue a good relationship with the union. I'm really pleased that that went that well. That's all I have.
Ms. Jordan?
Well, I just have to say, I wish that I had heard the report from Ms. Giavanelle regarding the Audit Committee prior to having this conversation, would have been totally different. So thank you for sharing that information. And I want to say congratulations to Mr. Ribble here. He has become a certified Board member, so congratulations to you. And he is the newest class emergent leader for the Florida School Board Association, so congratulations on that. Ms. Giavanelle stated a lot of the events that we all attended this last month, and with the cook-off, Island Coast did take first place in that. I wanted to give them a shout-out. She's only been there two years, and the kitchen that they had to produce that product in is very small, and I know that they've been cooking and using the teachers and staff to try everything out before they presented it out there, so they did a great job. I was excited, and Ms. Giavanelle was out there as well. We, I actually did my first garden build, and with students at Gateway, and we were out there, you know, with the hammers, the screwdrivers, the dirt, and everything else, making sure that we had the gardens put in place for these students. And the students were amazing. They came out, and they actually were showing adults how to build wagons, so that was, that was a lot of fun. And Lowe's was out there with us, they were one of the sponsors, and I hope that they picked up some of those students, because they really did an amazing job. We also did, this past weekend too, the marching bands, all our marching bands of the MPA at Fort Myers High. They did an exceptional job. We had some from Clovis, San La Bell, and different areas, but every one of them did a great job. One was better than the next, so they all were winners. And I can go on and on, you know, we had the storybook parades all over the districts, all the kids were characters in a book. You had to figure out which character they really were, though, in their book, so that was, that was a lot of fun with all the kids. And Build My Future at JetBlue, I mean, I've been everywhere this month, and thank you very much, and just congratulations again.
Thank you.
Mr. Persson's?
There's not much left to talk about, but I did go, I did go to one event that many of y'all went to, but my experience was definitely higher than your experience. That was the Builders' Future event there, at JetBlue Park. All the construction people came out and put on demonstrations of high-tech equipment and everything, and Mr. Ribble there, and I would have vetoed your certification if I could have there, Bill, because he talked me into going up on a lift. It was the Department of Transportation, the ones they use for the super-high lights at the interstate. I went up 55 feet. Bill, you looked very small from up there. Don't ever worry about your weight, as long as someone's that high above you. But anyway, it was, it was an exciting experience. I know many of the others went out there also. Mr. Matthews, thank you for showing us around too, introducing us to everybody on that one. That was a great time. That's all I have for now.
Ms. Chaviano?
I hate to like mimic the kudos, but like, the taco event was awesome. It was my first time going, and I've never been at Shangri-La, so that was an experience in itself, but I don't want to say I ate my weight in tacos. I was trying to be very cautious about how many tacos I was eating. I only had four, though, so, because I had to go to cheerleading practice, so there was something. But like, I was super impressed with our kids, and when you went to each station, they were super passionate about what they were doing and explaining how they made it, and their ingredients, and the entire process, and they were just lighting up, and it was, I was just proud to even watch it, like, just get the food and just say like, thank you, like, it was beautiful. So it made it incredibly hard to just vote for one, and I just, like, I was trying to hide when I voted, because I was like, I'm sorry, like, I'm just voting for yours. So it was incredibly hard, because they all worked so hard, and everything was incredibly delicious. I did not try the vegan one for very obvious reasons. But just kudos to our teachers and to our schools for just putting this together and supporting our kids, and to the partnerships with Florida Restaurant and Lodging, J. Johnson, and what they do to partner with us and our kids and our culinary to do that, because I joke that, like, I worry that my kids can't boil water, my youngest can cook, thank God, they can fend for their future, right? So like, these, these kids have such an opportunity to do such great things anywhere, and they can feed themselves, so I think that's great. And yes, I had my first time doing the Calendar Committee, and I didn't know what to expect when I walked in there, so kudos to Tauck and Spock and the admin and all everybody who was in there. I heard I was a lucky charm, because it was an hour and a half, and we got two calendars done. That's like a whole record, so I will, I'll do it again next year, two years from now, and we have to do it again to kind of keep the flow going, and we'll break the record. But other than that, I will save the rest for your action meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I attended a ton of things, which I'm not gonna bore you all with, but one thing I did do as well is I went to the United Way kickoff, and, you know, going into the holidays which we're entering in, it's very eye-opening as to the fact that there's still one in six kids that go home hungry every day, one in six. That's just not acceptable. And so I would, you know, I know, I know my family's gonna do our part with what we can this holiday season, but alongside of that, I was able to tour the brand-new Franklin Park Elementary, and inside Franklin Park Elementary is the United Way, like, I guess a little satellite office, if you will. And man, is that organized, so such a great job. I met a gentleman, David, who was just so passionate, and I could have talked to him for 30 minutes about what was going on, but they also have the, you know, the partnership with Lee Health inside of their building, which is so great for our employees and our staff and the surrounding community. So that was really, just, that was such a great visit with Dr. German, and I can't wait to go back. So I will save any of my other comments for this evening and move on to Attorney DuPuy Bruno.
Mr. Ribble, there was something that flew across my email about FSBA has an announcement. I had no idea what it was, but your name was there, so congratulations, and that's my only comment. Thank you.
Dr. Carlin?
Yes, thank you very much. So just thank you for today. If you think back on all of the topics that we addressed today, they touched on virtually all of our district priorities: school safety, fiscal responsibility, student achievement, teacher recruitment and retention. So just hats off to you for the great job you did. We went a little bit long today, but as you can see, our team is very committed to the work and working very diligently. I also want to give the Board a kudos, for the public to know, most all of our Board members, I believe at this point, all of our Board members have joined me on a school visit, at least one, if not more. And the opportunity to hear from the schools about their instructional improvement plans, if you haven't joined us, we'll be getting invitations out to you, but to hear about the schools' instructional improvement plans, and then to be able to walk classrooms and to be able to see those in action. And Mr. Ribble mentioned an opportunity, I know a number of us have had that opportunity. If we have not extended that to you, I invite you to join us when we visit schools in your, in your region. I think I can speak for the Board members that I've done that with so far, the experience of hearing from the principals, hearing from the administrative team, and really understanding what their wildly important goals are, their whigs, everything they're doing is helping us to improve student achievement, which leads us to becoming a school district. So thank you very much for your time commitment. I know it is, it's a long day. It is definitely, classroom by classroom, we take a look at what's going on, but I think it's important for you as a Board to see that what we talk about here at the District Office and at the dais is manifesting itself out in the schools. And so just thank you for your donation of time, thank you for taking the time. I know our schools appreciate it when they see you out there. Many of you go out without me, and that's great, too, but please know that the schools recognize your commitment. They understand you stand with them in their very difficult work each and every day to help us become a school district that's rated A. And remember, the A is, the kudos is less important than what it represents, and what it represents is more children walking across that stage at high school graduation. So that's what we're after, and just a big thank you to all of you that do that. And again, like I said, if you haven't had the opportunity, we'll have Kim hook up with you, and we'll get a time on the calendar. But really excited, and just thank you for your commitment and for your dedication.
Thank you, Dr. Carlin. Today, we'll have a student performance, finally, that's so exciting, at 5:45 PM, followed by our School Board Action Meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is 4:43 PM. Thank you.